Six P M. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
City Attorney Joden?
Here.
If you pardon me just a moment, Mr. Mayor. Too many buttons. City Attorney Joden?
Here.
City Manager Harlow Shalk?
Here.
Commissioner Halliday?
Here.
Commissioner Dean?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here. Would you rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our city commission meetings for March eighth and March twenty-second were received. Do we have any comments, suggestions? If not, the minutes will be, will stand as submitted. Consent agenda. B. R O I to approve the work plan and budget of the Business Improvement District and to levy an assessment up all properties within the district for the fiscal year 2022 and to set a public hearing date for June twenty-eighth, 2021. R O I to approve and, um, R O I to approve work plan and budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District and to levy an assessment upon all properties within the district for the fiscal year 2022. A resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the Streets Maintenance and Improvement District, number one, for fiscal year 2022, and levy and assess all properties within the district. A resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the Open Space Maintenance District One for fiscal year 2022 and levy and assess all properties within the district. F. A resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for this Special Street Lightened District for fiscal year 2022 and levy and assess all properties within the district. G. A resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the Stormwater Utility Service area for fiscal year 2022 and levy and assess all properties within the service. H. A resolution of intention to specify the assessment options for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse, for refuse to fiscal year 2022, and levy and assess all properties receiving residential solid waste collection. I. Resolution of intention to specify the assessment option for the Special Urban Forest Management District for fiscal year 2022 and levy and assess all properties within the district. J. The resolution intention to specify an assessment option for the Landfill Monetary and Maintenance District for fiscal year 2022. Oh, excuse me. And levy and assess all properties within the district. K. A resolution of intentions to set rates for all customers of the City of Helena Water System for fiscal year 2022. L. A resolution of intentions to set residential and commercial wastewater base and usage rate for fiscal year 2022. M. A resolution granting one-year extension of resolution number two zero six zero six. The vacation of Sixth Avenue between North Roberts and Sanders. N. A resolution of intention to levy and assess properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public right of way. O. A resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of reimbursement for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city for tax year 2021. P. A resolution of intentions to levy and assess properties to recover amortized loan issue under the Residential Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Loan Program for tax year 2021. Q. A resolution of intention to levy assessment for improvements of sidewalk curb, gutter, and alley approaches in the City of Helena, Montana for tax year 2021. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions on, um, item D, the street maintenance.
Item D. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I guess before asking the question, just by way of background, historically, when we've done rate, uh, setting for the year, and maybe this is for Commissioners Dean and Logan too, just because I don't think you guys have been through a rate-setting process because last year they were, um, we did a two-year rate-setting process the year before, so there were no rates to be set last year. Historically, we've gone through the budget by not putting the rates, or at least staff has not put rates into the base budget. Essentially budgeting conservatively to see that we live within our means. If a rate is then determined to be necessary, or an increase in the rates are determined to be necessary, we've had a discussion about that, posted it, and then adopted them by the second or third week in August, whatever statutorily required. So we've usually not done it this early, and it doesn't really matter to me when we do it. Best practices, if we do it before August, whatnot. But one of the reasons for doing them after the adoption of the budget historically has been in case we, um, as a commission, decided we had any other priorities or other items to add into the budget to make sure that then Department Directors or the Finance Director or the Manager could go back and determine whether any of those additional items were necessary or called for a rate increase. So just, just understand that when I'm asking that, is that's my background understanding of our prior history of rate increases. So for D, with the street maintenance improvements, it seems like if we adopt the current budget as stated, our excess reserves only come to about $500,000 after we spend down our, sort of, all of the excess cash that we've had. And we've had a number of discussions about items that weren't in the budget, like the voluntary sidewalk program, which we'd previously put at about $150,000. Safe routes to schools, which is previously in there at, uh, 200. And then slips, slip and falls, which had been in there at 225, I believe, previously. And so those numbers together, let's just say there was commission consensus, would be about $475,000, which would put our remaining cash balance, if we adopted all of those, to somewhere in the range of like $30,000 remaining in the street maintenance fund. That's excess. We'd, we'd continue to have the, the other reserves set by the manager. If there were any other items that the commission wanted, for example, we've discussed Knight Street, brought up, uh, preliminary engineering possibilities for Centennial Trail or crossings on Euclid. I'm just trying to get a sense of either Director Danielson or the manager's thoughts on those. If we were to say, adopt $750,000 and eclipse that remaining reserve, is that okay without a rate increase? Would that then call for a rate increase? I'm, I'm just trying to suss that out because it looks like we're getting right down to that zero level if, if there is commission consensus even on those initial three items.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner? As part of the presentation tonight, I'll be sharing to you the discretionary dollars left as by way of balance after, um, after we have completed that, that summary review of, of the dollars brought before you. And what I wanted to, to make sure and, and share to you is that, yes, we anticipate having sufficient funds without having to complete that increase that you're describing. Now, again, the rates are based on the budget is submitted by the manager. So if you in fact decided to revise and go beyond and decide as a commission that you would like to increase the amount of funds that are available to the city by way of the streets assessment, that would be up to your prerogative. I will share to you, you had shared the, the ending balance being close to 500,000. And right now, based on what I'm seeing, it's around 289,902. So I can ask Commissioner Danielson to, or excuse me, Director Danielson to, uh, further clarify if she'd like anything beyond what I have shared.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. And maybe just in that process as well, my understanding historically, if the commission were to choose to adjust rates, when we notice rates as are proposed in our packet this evening, we're not allowed to adjust upwards, was my understanding, once we adopt the initial resolutions of intent to set rates. And so if we adopt zeros tonight, we've always been told in the past that we cannot go, say, up to 2% if that was necessitated. So I'm just curious if, if you have thoughts on that.
Director Danielson?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Halliday. I believe that is correct, um, that if you do move forward with a resolution of intention, you may not increase rates at this point. And, um, the rates at this point for all of these assessments are set with the manager's proposal at this time. So should the commission decide to add appropriations to any particular fund that may or may not deplete the cash balances, you may at that point pull back the R O A, ROI for, for the particular assessment, table it until further discussion on the budget and appropriations have been settled, and then we can come back with a revised ROI for the assessments. And you are correct as well that typically these assessments have not come forward to the commission until after the preliminary budget adoption. We were moving forward with no rate increases based on the conversations that we've had with trying to understand our assessments, the methodology for assessments. And so at that point, we decided to move forward a little bit earlier with these ROIs, but they can certainly be postponed after further discussions.
Well, and I, yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to explore what the best way to do it is, right? If we, if we waited until, say, July seventh, right, to do the ROIs, we'd have at least that budget passed on June twenty-eighth. Everything goes through exactly as it is today. Then we do the ROIs at zero and life moves on. If we go crazy and increase the, you know, open space maintenance budget by $2 million, and you're like, geez, guys, you need to, need to increase this rate, then, then we have the opportunity to do that without doing any other mechanical tricks. It just seems that if we do it tonight at zero, we're going to run into a problem during the subsequent amendment process, right? Even, even if, even if there are three commissioners who want to do certain projects, say, in a, in a fund, fund a new trail, fund a new parking lot for open space. If we say zero tonight, then the answer is going to be, we can't do it without either pulling back the ROI or we're going to get stymied if we do the, the final product. And since they seem to be syncing up on the twenty-eighth, that, that could kind of be a problem. So I'm, I'm just curious, your thoughts on what, would there be a detriment to, you know, delaying all of these ROIs until post-twenty-eighth budget adoption? Or street maintenance? I mean, that's the only one I'm seeing that we still have some room for discussion in, where we're, we look like we might be pretty close to the cash balance. And so I, I don't, I don't necessarily have a opinion about, you know, stormwater or water at this point. If that's the recommendation, we don't see any debt on the horizon. But street maintenance, because it seems so close, and maybe there won't be any other amendments adopted, maybe we'll have fifteen. And that just seems to make, hopefully, your life a little bit easier than to force you to do two or three tricks.
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday. No, there would be no detriment to postponing these ROIs.
If I may, Mayor?
Go ahead, come, um, Madam Manager.
Commissioner O'Loughlin had her hand raised.
Oh. My apology, Commissioner.
Oh, it's, it's okay, Mayor. I just maybe had one more follow-up question for Commissioner, or I did the same thing, Director Danielson. So as we're talking about streets and sort of where we sit with that, with that fund, are, are there any other funds in, in your mind that also sort of were, were kind of close that if we were to say we'd like to look at, you know, other future projects within the next fiscal year budget, we would, we would have to discuss rates? Or is streets perhaps the only one?
If I may? Mayor?
Go ahead, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. When we went through the adoption process of the book of fees, I shared there were, um, many and most of our fees had questionable methods and assessment method itself. The mathematics were interesting. To identify a particular outcome with the dollars was something we were intentionally not trying to get after just because there were so many of these assessments that actually need a good vetting and evaluation as to their, their methodology, including the streets fund. And we brought it up as part of the conversation around the airport as well. So my concern to all of you would be that in the long run, the city could in fact spend time providing better analysis. If the commission were to choose to expand spending and increase fees, that would result in a cascading effect on the evaluation of those assessments, which have not been put together yet. So that could extend the, the ROIs even further than the twenty-eighth because I would hate to bring to you an assessment just to hit the dollar amount, knowing that the math is questionable in its method. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Manager Hollisalk.
Maybe a follow-up on that from Prince Danielson. Are we, are we talking about adjusting any of the assessment methodologies, methodologies for fiscal twenty-two?
All of the assessments at this time are under evaluation.
I, I guess what I mean is if we adjusted the rate, right, as the assessment exists today, the new assessment isn't going to be, the new methodology can't be adopted until the next time rates are actually set and changed, correct?
That is correct.
So if we needed to adjust street maintenance up even like 1% this year, that shouldn't change your methodology, your, your math, right? Because we're just going to increase it by $300,000 or something for the year. You can still work on what the new proper methodology would be if you don't think that the square footage measurement is, is the right way to do it. Right? I'm all with you. Like, I think, I think a lot of our methodologies are not very good, and I've wanted us to fix street maintenance for a long time. The old Finance Director said it would be too much work and didn't want to do it. So like, power to you. Good luck. I, I think it's a great idea. But I, I just want to make sure that we, we separate the question. If we just need an extra $300,000 in cash to make sure the fund is solvent this year, and then you guys can cut loose and get us the, the best method by which to assess, we should be able to do that, shouldn't we?
It is a matter ma, um, of a mathematical equation, yes. We could, we can incorporate that.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions on these resolutions? Claims, consent agenda? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no raised hands, and I've received no written public comment on the consent agenda.
Thank you. So, um, for consent agenda, item B, we have a corrected bid resolution, and I'm sure all of you have that in your packet. At this time, I would open, accept, uh, for B, it states we, we move to consent agenda, item A through Q, including correct a version of item B related to the proposed assessment for the Business Improvement District. So.
So I guess maybe just a question, Mr. Mayor, would, you know, I'd, I'd like to know, would people be open to removing item D or tabling item D for now? I'm ha, I'm fine with moving the rest of them if that's the, the, what the commission wants. But delaying on item D until we complete the budget process, determine whether anything needs to be done with item D. And then, you know, as, as Ms. Danielson said, it's not going to impact getting that rate set. If it's still zero in July tenth, then it's still zero. If it's not, then we, we avoided a problem.
Okay. So the floor is open, Commissioners. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I, I would be okay with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Dean. Any others?
Question, please.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
For the manager, um, maybe just a, another opportunity, if there is a downside to this, could you, um, explain that to us? If there is.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, there is no downside to delaying and with the potential to increase your rate total assessed for next year. No.
Thank you.
So. Okay.
So Mayor, I'm happy to make a, a motion to approve items A through C and items E through Q with the amended, uh, the corrected language.
Second?
Madam Clerk, has been moved and seconded.
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
And then, Mayor, I would move to table item D with the direction of bringing it forward after final, or after, um, the public hearing on the budget on June twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Bid award. Lawrence and Warren Inspection Intersection Reconstruction Bid Award. Uh, Madam Hollisalk?
Thank you, Mayor. Like to, uh, share to you, Will, we have two project items, A and B, both as part of the presentations and conversation tonight. Director Knopki is available to provide further detail on these, um, items before you. If, uh, you'd like to come forward, Director Knopki, and answer or provide any high-level detail. I know that there was further conversation on item A in email and that I'd want to make sure and share to you all. And that is that when the agenda is put together and items are submitted, I work with the directors to make sure that a recommendation is made. The Lawrence and Warren Intersection Reconstruction Bid Award in particular was one that was offered up as options to the commission and not in particular a recommendation. I sent it back to David, to Director Knopki for a recommendation. So, um, I would say that it's a soft recommendation among the recommendations that we provide to you so that there's plenty of opportunity to ask questions. And, um, definitely, I know that, um, we have with us either on the phone or in person, I do not see them in person, members of, uh, the school district who may also be available to provide input on these items. Director Knopki?
You have the floor, Director Knopki.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. I'll be brief. The existing crossing at Lawrence and Warren is approximately 150 feet in length, which is a daunting crossing effort for even an adult, much less a school child trying, going across to either going to school or from back. This project will reconfigure that intersection to reduce that down to about 55 feet and provide better visibility for drivers of those, uh, people crossing that intersection. The, the project was bid on April sixth to redo the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and roadway. Previous to that, city staff received some comments at a public meeting and from a central school parent group. The Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council participated in a walk audit to look at the three intersections. And out of the, that walk audit came some recommendations of reinstallation of the crosswalk at Ninth that was previously taken out due to collaborative effort between the city and the school district to try to funnel the school kids and any pedestrians down to Eighth Avenue, where the school district, when they built Central School, provided pole bouts, they provided crossing guard there. And that was the preferred route to get the kids down and across. Some of the drawbacks at the Ninth Crossing that were examined back then were the proximity to the school buses pulling in and out of that area and also the emergency access, um, um, point is right there at that crossing. So tonight, uh, we're recommending a ward of the base bid and, um, of the Lawrence and Warren Intersection Reconstruction Project, City Project 1908, to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of 174,344.50 and then any additive alternates. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Commission? Go ahead, Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Mayor, Director Knopki, I was just wondering, so in light of the cooperative effort between the school district and the city to remove the crosswalk, um, and, and, and try to direct traffic to Eighth, has the city gone back to assess, did it, did, did that work? I'm just curious, you know, what, what, what you all have seen there as far as, um, did the removal of this, of the crosswalk result in people, people crossing elsewhere?
Mayor and Commissioners, so as a result of the walk audit, it showed that people are still crossing at Ninth. And I would, I guess, clarify when I say remove the crosswalk. We removed the, the pavement markings and then directed the ADA ramps perpendicular to the roadway. You know, I, I don't, I'm not sure if prior to, or pre-COVID, we were having some, um, more compliance to, I guess, the intended route. I do know that during COVID, there was some changes in accessing the buildings that I think may have prompted a little bit more use of the crossing there at Ninth. I, I can, I guess I can only say that during the walk audit, that it was observed that people are crossing at Ninth without the crosswalk. Montana state law does, um, note, or says, states that any intersection is a crosswalk, whether marked or unmarked in the state of Montana. So, you know, uh, people driving should be observing that if that crosswalk is occupied, they should be stopping. I'm not, I'm going to tell you that that rule is not followed consistently, probably in Helena or across the, um, the state, but that is what it is. And I do know that, uh, the school district, um, had sent out a memo, basically, or an email response that they were still wanting to move forward with their Eighth Crossing and not install this. But I believe that their, they may be on the line. Their Director of Maintenance, Cali Kind, or the Superintendent may be on the line to answer any questions that you have from a school perspective.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, I didn't even know that Montana law. So I can imagine how many others don't know it. And so it's scary. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I do have a couple of questions. Um, so in the, I think, for Director Knopki, and I'd be interested to hear the school district's response to, in the information that we were provided, it discusses that the crosswalk was removed because it was not safe, which was why they were wanting to have kids cross at Eighth. And I'm, and then what I, we're hearing from the public comment is that without the crosswalk there, um, well, not all the public comment, but many of the parents have contacted the commission that they feel like it is not safe without it. Um, and so I'm wondering if maybe you can... And so I'm wondering if maybe you can address whether you think the safety would be improved, considering that is the bus lane and the fire truck lane, too. And then what we would do to, you know, mitigate those kind of risks if we did move forward with putting a crosswalk back in? And what would the district do to help mitigate those risks?
Mayor and Commissioners, I cannot say what the school district would do or not do. I can say that, you know, the intent was, again, to funnel them all down to an enhanced crosswalk, which provided bulbouts and a crossing guard and to try to take them in, basically, at the main entrance of the school. I did read some of the comments that, you know, they're forced to go into the north playground entrance. I don't know that for sure. And I don't know if that's still the policy of the school. If we installed bulbouts, you know, bulbouts always enhance the pedestrian visibility to vehicles. It puts them out there a little bit farther in a, you know, area that the vehicles can readily see them. Putting back in the crosswalk, yes, it would provide more safety than an unmarked crosswalk. But there are some drawbacks. There's some concerns with, again, the interactions with the school buses, because that would be in that area if bulbouts were installed. The buses would have to, you know, try to swing that turning movement into their bus turn lane. And there's concern that they could be misaligned and then buses sticking out or what have you. That's why there is a little caveat in the presentation that if we did go forward with the bulbouts or the crosswalk or any of the alternatives, that we would want to consider making that section of ewing one-way, southbound. That kind of accomplishes two goals. It provides a little bit more room for the buses to maneuver. It also provides more room in the wintertime for people dropping off or picking up at the school. Because right now, we have a pretty traditional Helena roadway that has parking on one side and school pickup on the other. You get two vehicles opposing each other, and it gets narrow. And then in the wintertime, you introduce any snow berms or whatever. The other point that that would help would be most passengers exit a vehicle from the passenger side. So if you had a one-way, southbound, the passenger doors are opening towards the school, which would provide, you know, which would eliminate school age or anybody from getting out on the passenger side and crossing traffic. This would put them basically right at the curb.
Thank you, Director Knopki.
I'd also be interested if the school district has any answers to some of those questions, too.
Yeah, we'll get to them. We're with the Commissioners right now, so. Commissioner Logan?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, either for the manager or Director Knopki, that with the acceptance of the bid award, and it's kind of a basic question, sorry, but the acceptance of the bid award tonight, would that prevent us from moving forward with any of the steps that you've talked about or possibly we've heard from the public to take those steps in the future? Are they mutually exclusive?
If I may, no, they are not. They're just, the add-alt, the alternatives are really what we're talking about and making sure we get the direction is just the secondary piece. So no, it does not affect the actual bid award.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, a question from Mr. Knopki. So, there's a bulbout at Eighth Avenue running from the north side of Eighth Avenue to the south side of Eighth Avenue, adjacent to Central, right?
I believe so, yes.
And how far from the existing bus lane where the buses can pull in, that bay that was built onto the property? How far from the bay is that bulbout?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'd have to get back with you, though, with that measurement. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Has the school district complained to us that that bulbout on Eighth Avenue, on that southern end of their bus bay, inhibits their buses from exiting or entering into the bus bay? Because that was part of the collaborative process, I think, in designing this.
Mayor and Commissioners, I have not heard anything from the school district in reference to your specific scenario.
Did you get a chance to see the video that we were sent this morning by a Central parent?
Mayor and Commissioners, no, I did not receive it.
I was just going to ask you your thoughts, because it's almost like the Helena Fire Department wanted to provide us with some level of visual understanding, because for the first portion of the video, our truck, not just, you know, a small response vehicle, but the fire truck, directly across the emergency lane. So it's directly in the way. Kids are going around the truck on both sides. So they're in the street longer in trying to get there. Two school buses go by that fire truck during at least a portion of the video. I didn't count if there were more trips by them. So I guess I was curious, is the proposed bulbout that would be on Ninth, either on the southern corner or the northern portion, is that anticipated to be wider than a city fire truck? Just because the fire department decided to give us a demonstrable today?
Mayor and Commissioners, the size of the bulbout are typically the width of the parking lane. So in that area, I would say it'd be anywhere between six and eight feet wide or encroaching into the roadway, I guess.
So either as wide or probably narrower than a regulation fire truck? And I apologize if you don't know the width of it. So, at least we saw. Doesn't prove anything, right? But we saw school buses happily navigating that with a fire truck parked alongside the driving lane there today. So we had at least a minimal demonstrable of what a bulbout would look like for a bus passing by. If not more.
Without seeing the video, I can't completely answer the question, but from what you explained, it sounds correct.
Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Clerk, do we have the school district online or Zoom?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have no hands raised specific to that group, but I do have a couple of hands raised. I can open the mic for those individuals at this time, if you prefer.
Do you have, are you sure the hands that are raised is not connected to the school district?
No.
Okay.
So, I can tell you that there is a city staff person that has their hand raised, and then there is Greg Worth as well.
Okay, we'll open it up.
I have Greg Worth.
Go ahead, Greg. Okay.
I can tell you that there is a city staff person that has their hand raised, and then there... Oh geez, Mr. Mayor, too many buttons.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Worth.
Thank you. Again, my name is Greg Worth. I reside at 501 State Street. I am a member of the City Non-Motorized Travel Advisory Council. As Director Knopki mentioned, MTAC fully supports the Warren and Lawrence crossing intersection improvements to shorten the crossing distance. We did have a walk audit and talk in depth regarding the additional crosswalks. And we recognize that, you know, there were some previous conversations about the operations of the schools prior to Central School being rebuilt. I think we recognize that the actual operations have changed rather than planned. In response to some of the school correspondence that was received in mid-June 2020, we had solicited the school and scheduled a walk audit to accommodate the school district personnel in response to hearing some concerns from the parent council and, you know, other residents, other public commentary. Unfortunately, the school district did not attend that walk audit, which really would have aided in some helpful conversation. I would like to provide some additional commentary to the walk audit that didn't get in your packet. Some additional comments were, the vast majority of the school pedestrian traffic crossed Ninth Avenue on the south side where the crosswalk was removed. Jaywalking or a diagonal crossing of Ninth Avenue and Warren intersection was improved. The vehicular drop-off was very congested. Parking and idling cars severely impeded the pedestrian crossing visibility. The street grades and snow storage exacerbated the congestion and contributed to lack of visibility. Trepidation was observed for young children crossing Warren Street when accompanied, unaccompanied by an adult. When we did the walk audit, it was in late October of last year. And this is when the school was in their COVID procedures. So school attendance observed may have been a third of what a normal attendance would have been, because it was on the AB schedule. So you had half of the kids there on Monday, Tuesday, half the kids there Thursday, Friday. And then there are also a significant number of kids that opted for digital learning. The overly chaotic drop-off was readily apparent, lack of definition, limited visibility, and high presence of vehicular traffic contributed to an unsafe pedestrian experience. Students did not use the main entrance on Eighth Avenue. Kids play on the playground prior to being staged to enter the building. To enter the playground from Warren, you either enter from the north or the south side of the building, but the parking lot is on the south side. The most easily access to the playground is from Warren and Ninth intersection. Also, we recognize that implementing any crosswalk improvements at Warren and Ninth, you know, with the Warren and Lawrence improvements project is the best opportunity with construction efficiencies and otherwise may not never happen, as come back as another project. So, following our walk audit, MTAC discussed the walk audit and approved a motion to install both crosswalks on Ninth Avenue. We, MTAC really cherishes our role to facilitate projects, you know, but, you know, with that facilitation, we desire progress that leads, you know, to hardscape improvements. We request that the city capitalize on this opportunity to provide a safer school access for young children. Now, on behalf of MTAC, we'd recommend a ward of the base bid and Alternatives Number Two and Number Three. And Alternative Number Two is installing crosswalks on both the north side and the south side of Ninth Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have any other hands?
Mr. Mayor, next I have Mark Young.
Go ahead, Mark. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to address Commissioner Halliday's question, maybe a little bit about the size of the bulbouts. If you look in your packets, on the plan sheets, you can see the bulbouts. If you look on the, kind of, that north side of the crosswalk at Ninth, or the intersection at Ninth, it's about four feet on either side that they're currently designed. And so that would be similar to an eight-foot bulbout, which would actually be similar to the width of a fire truck. So hopefully that answers the question a little better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I have Callie. I believe this is Callie Kind.
Go ahead, Callie.
Good evening. Thank you. So I am Callie Kind. I'm the Helena School District Facilities Director. And I just wanted to speak a little bit about the design approach that was used for Central. You know, we had a very comprehensive design team. We have Robert Peashon Associates, SMA Architects. We work really closely with the city. And when we build a school, it's not just bricks and mortar. We look at traffic flow. We do traffic studies. We look at, you know, how we're going to get students there through bus transportation, through parent transportation, through pedestrian. And as we all know, Warren comes with a lot of challenges. There's a 40-foot drop between Warren and Cruz. So really, we only had Warren Avenue for bus and parent drop-off and pickup. The design was intentional. None of it happened by mistake. It was intentional to have a crosswalk at the Warren and Eighth Avenue Promenade. That was something that was really important to the community, to keep that consistency. It also was important from a safety aspect. The Ninth Avenue crosswalk, the Ninth Avenue crosswalk right there at the entrance to the bus lane was removed. That was a joint decision with the Helena School District, the design team, and the City of Helena. And the school district paid for the removal of that crosswalk in our project. And it was removed for various reasons. First of all, that's where buses come into the bus lane. And we don't want kids crossing a crosswalk right behind buses. If that crosswalk was to be put back in and it had bulbouts, you are going to have buses that are going to stick out beyond that bus lane. And you're going to have kids crossing in a blind spot. And by the time they come beyond a bus, they're going to be in the lane of oncoming traffic. We intentionally did not want that. That is also where the fire lane comes in. We try to keep kids crossing and buses very separate, which is why there's a bulbout at the Eighth Avenue Promenade. From the school district's perspective, we heavily oppose a crosswalk being added at that Ninth Avenue intersection for all the reasons stated previously. It is a huge safety concern. We put a crossing guard at the Eighth Avenue Promenade. The minute you put a crosswalk there, you are basically telling children it is a safe area to cross. And it is not. It's not a safe area to cross. When I grew up here in Helena, there was a student hit crossing between buses out at Jim Darcy. We don't want that to happen at Central School. So from the school district's perspective, we heavily oppose putting back in the crosswalk at Ninth Avenue that we already paid to have removed as a joint decision with the City of Helena, the design team, and the Helena School District. We're not opposed to one being down at the Lawrence-Warren new intersection that's being built. We're not opposed to that, but we do not want to see one at that Ninth Avenue intersection. Not where buses are coming in. It's a huge safety concern on our behalf. And we sincerely appreciate you listening to our comments and taking them in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. There's clearly a problem there, Callie. So what do you suggest? How do we solve that problem? Because there is a problem that exists. Callie?
Okay, I'm back. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. We've talked about, you know, administratively handling it and bringing kids in through the building to the playground for next year. There's a lot of options that we can handle administratively, but we don't want kids crossing behind buses. You know, you think about kids crossing from east to west, one thing, but think about kids coming from west to east. The minute they come behind a bus, they're in the lane of oncoming traffic. And it just, it's such a safety concern, you know. We've, the school has done different things about trying to break up grade levels and discharging them or having them come in at different areas around the campus to try to alleviate that congestion. But we're still open to, you know, bringing and opening those front doors and bringing all the kids in through the school in the morning and ushering them through the building to the playground. We recognize that families can cross anywhere they want. If a family, a mom and a child or a father and a child, want to walk their child across that Ninth Avenue, that's fine. But the minute you put a crosswalk there, you invite people to cross that and you imply that it's safe. And that's our biggest concern, is that it's not safe. We're not saying a family couldn't choose to cross that on their own if they want. We don't want to invite children to use that as a safe place to cross, because we don't see it that way. If there was one down on this new intersection where Lawrence would cross Warren, you know, maybe you could do it that way. Cross Lawrence onto the west side there of Warren, maybe that would be better. But my also concern is the vicinity. When you come up Lawrence headed east and you are going to turn right on Warren, the vicinity from that intersection to that crosswalk is very hard. And because it's uphill, people accelerate. So they go to turn right, and they are already accelerating, and then boom, they would have to stop. There's just a lot of concerns we see. We think that you can better serve students by getting them away from that and maybe crossing at Lawrence or crossing at that Eighth Avenue Promenade. We'd really like to see that happen.
Commissioners?
Maybe for Mr. Knopki. How far with the realigned T junction at Lawrence and Warren is the car that'll be turning right onto Warren? How far will they be approximately from the northernmost portion of Ninth Avenue?
Mayor and Commissioners, if I could, I'd ask Mark Young to speak to that, because he's at his computer and has the... and, and has the plans up to reference that exact measurement.
Mark, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so just looking at the plans, it looks like it's just under a hundred and fifty feet, so probably closer to a hundred and forty feet from the newly aligned intersection heading south to that intersection at Ninth.
And so, Mr. Young, just humor me for a second because people tell me I'm pretty dense. Is the new aligned intersection, is that going to make it farther for a vehicle traveling from Lawrence to come to Ninth Avenue or closer than the turn onto Warren as it exists today?
So, Mayor and Commissioner, that distance today is actually you, you're almost looking at the intersection of Ninth when you come up the south side to turn right off of Lawrence onto Warren. So, that'll be, you know, a much greater, much greater distance.
So, that dangerous condition that Miss Kind indicated, the turn from Lawrence onto Warren, where buses are swinging up on a turn at high speed apparently, that will be eliminated, or at a minimum, that distance is gonna be pushed out close to a hundred and forty feet if we pass at least the base bid tonight. Is that right?
Yeah, so the distance will be longer as far as acceleration. It is, it is still heading up a hill from Lawrence intersection toward the Ninth intersection. So, I'm sure there's some sort of acceleration going on just to, just to drive up the hill, but...
And, and so, just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, but once a bus, under the new aligned plan, makes that turn to travel south on Warren, at the time they reach Ninth Avenue and that bus bay, are they, is that bus gonna be making a turn or is it just gonna be going straight at that point, once it's on that hundred and forty feet?
No, then, then it will be straight, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Any others? Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Callie Kind.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Miss Kind. I'm wondering, can you tell us what kind of communication the school district or the school has with parents and students about why that intersection, the district views as being unsafe? And I guess how, how would people know not, not to be crossing there regularly?
You have the floor, Kelly.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So, I just wanted to follow up to one thing Commissioner Holliday said. It's not the buses that are accelerating up that, the buses don't come up Lawrence Avenue. Those were just regular traffic. The buses are coming and swinging into the bus loop. They're not traveling up Lawrence and headed south. So, and, and they're not traveling at high speeds. I apologize. I'm not sure where that comment came from. But I was talking about just regular traffic as they come up today and people veer off to turn south on Warren. They're accelerating. They're going uphill and accelerating. That is not the traffic flow for buses. The buses do need to be able to come in. They are traveling south on Warren, and they need to come in beyond Ninth Avenue and swing into a bus loop. And, and they need to be able to be tail to tail on that without hanging out. And so, the bulb, although that intersection at Lawrence and Warren will push back, it doesn't change the concern that students would be traveling on a crosswalk directly behind a bus. And if all those buses aren't tucked in, you could have the tail end of a bus sticking out. So, just wanted to clarify on that. To answer the question about communication with the parents, so we've done a couple of things during the course of building Central School. We have a lot of community meetings. We did a lot of those in partnership with the City of Helena. We had several at the First Baptist Church in Montana across the street. We have a lot of communication. I've communicated personally with some parents. I've dialogued through email with any emails that I've received. I know that Principal John Stillson has had a lot of communication with his community. I know he has communicated with his PTO group. And we, we do value tremendously people's concerns. It's not as if we don't value those concerns. We do. But I just wanna step back again and say that the team of experts that we had on this design team, this is what their experience and their education is in. And we solicited a lot of people to be a part of that design team. And it was collectively unanimous, including the City of Helena, that this was an unsafe intersection. And I know it's a convenience factor. It's not convenient to not have it there, but we're here for one reason. We serve students, and we do every day what's best for students, and student safety is our priority. And so, it was not negotiable to leave that Ninth Avenue, that Ninth Avenue intersection. In no way can I see how you can safely have a crosswalk directly behind a bus lane. I, I just, I cannot see that, and neither can any person that served on that design team.
Miss Klein, I think Commissioner Dane is talking about since the design has happened and we've noticed some of those problems, have you all communicated with the parents and other stakeholders since then?
Yes. I personally have responded to emails, but I know that Principal Stillson, I spoke with him recently, as last Thursday, has had communication with his PTO group. I know he has communication with his parents directly. I, I know that that is an ongoing dialogue that happens. And so, yes, that, that communication is continuous. And I think it's an unfortunate situation where there's a want to have it there. And from a safety perspective, it's not ju, we can't support a crosswalk at Ninth Avenue. The school district can't. We, we can't support that because of all the safety concerns we presented. But we are committed to finding a way to get kids, you know, into the building and into the playground safely. Absolutely. We're never gonna stop looking at those opportunities. But we don't want to invite children with an identified crosswalk to cross behind buses. We can't do that in good conscience.
So, what has the school district done to, to alleviate that problem? Because I hear you saying that you are committed to the kids' safety. And right now, we notice that they're traveling, I mean, it's, it's not safe presently. So, what is, what has the school district done since they've noticed that?
Right. So, like I said, Prince, Mr. Mayor, Principal Stillson has changed where, by grade level. He's broken up and had different grade levels pick up on different parts of the property to avoid that congestion. So, we dismiss and we receive certain grade levels come in on the west side from Cruz Avenue. Certain grade levels, you know, come out of the front of the building and they go to the north. Other grade levels come out and they go to the south. So, we've tried to separate those groups and try to alleviate that congestion and try to create a safer environment. And what I have been told is that that has made some improvements. But I think it's an evolving conversation. And clearly, the fact that Warren Avenue sits forty feet higher than Cruz Avenue, this, this clearly has not been a recent issue. I mean, this has been an issue on that site for over a hundred years of education. You know, our original schools were eighteen seventy-five, and still the demographics are the same. But it was really important to the community that we rebuild on that site despite the fact that it came with some challenges. And so, I appreciate that there are concerns that are ongoing. And I can just assure you that we're gonna continue to engage in those conversations. We're gonna continue to work with our parents and our community to do what's right. But we just feel very strongly, the Ninth Avenue crosswalk is not the solution. We are open to a crosswalk at Lawrence and Warren, and then maybe across Lawrence to the school property, not directly behind the bus lane. We just can't condone kids walking behind buses. We specifically put the bulb at Fifth Avenue to separate bus traffic from parent traffic. We also don't want parents going up against buses. We certainly don't want children going up against buses as a pedestrian. So, I think it's an ongoing dialogue, Mr. Mayor, that we have to keep engaging in, and I think it continues to evolve. And we're never gonna stop that dialogue. We just feel really strongly about this crosswalk.
And you know, I feel really strongly about the kids' safety. If this is just ongoing, this is not helping the situation at all. We need to find a solution. Any other comment?
I have a question for Miss Kind. What, do you know what date? The, because all the plans were made with the expectation that children were going to enter at the Eighth Avenue front entrance of the school, which was designed to be a safe crossing. Do you know what date Central School internally changed the process so that all kids enter up at the playground entrance on Ninth?
No, I don't, Mr. Commissioner Holliday. I don't know. As the director, I don't know when that was changed. I know that it was important to the community that they wanted the Eighth Avenue Promenade. I know they wanted the wall. They called the Humpty Dumpty Wall. That was really important to the community to have that, to sit out front, to receive their students. Obviously, we have gates to access the playground at various locations. We have one on the east side. We have one on the west side. We have one on the north side, and we have one on the south side. So, you can enter the playground on all four sides of that property. I don't know, I, I can't say for certain because I don't know if there was a formal communication to say all kids go through that gate. So, I apologize. I can't speak to that. I just know that by design, fulfilling what the wants and desires that community wore at the time, that they wanted that Eighth Avenue Promenade. But you can enter that playground from all four sides of the property.
So, I'll, I'll give you a little, a little hint here, and my numbers aren't exact. But the policy changed about five minutes after Central opened its doors, and kids were heading up to that playground. I might be off by a minute or two. One of the parent council members can probably correct me. That this conversation was elevated to me as a commissioner within that, maybe three minutes of that five-minute policy change as an extreme concern. It was elevated to John Stillson after that and to you. Do, do you understand the frustration on the part of parents who hear that there's going to be a collaborative conversation ongoing for two years and not get, and not get any form of tangible solution proposed on it? Do you understand how emails, many of which are copy and paste back to parents, frustrate them when people forward them to me and say, "I don't understand the school district's position on this. Why aren't we trying to work towards a solution here?" Do you understand how that can be frustrating to then tell them once again, "This is an evolving situation. We'll just have to wait and see and hope to do better in the future"?
Commissioner Holliday, as a parent of elementary school students, I absolutely can appreciate that. And at this point, all I can do is apologize. My, my door is always open. My office is open. I hand out my cell phone number freely. I'll, I'll put it on record for you guys tonight if you want, four three one two seven nine seven. I will take calls from anybody at any time. This is my hometown. I went K-12 here. This is my children's hometown. I am committed to finding solutions. I apologize. I am not the administrator of that school. I am the facilities director. And, and I'm not gonna make excuses for why things happen, but I'm, I'm on record saying I am committed to working with that community to find a solution. I understand how frustrating that must have been, and I will apologize on behalf of the Helena School District for the frustration that you as parents have taken on. It's not okay. But we do need to work together to find a solution, and one that is not only safe for kids, but serves that community well.
So, maybe one more follow-up, Miss Kind. So, you mentioned that kids crossing at Ninth would be behind sort of the blind zone on the back of a bus, if I'm using the terminology incorrectly. I apologize. If, if a kid crosses at Ninth today, is the same problem in existence?
The same problem in existence, which is why we don't have a crosswalk there to invite the traffic. We can't stop somebody from crossing anywhere around the property, right? But we put the crosswalk at Eighth Avenue to invite, this is a safe place to cross. This is where we want students to flow.
Okay, but, but the problem exists today, then, if students are crossing there. They're, they're experiencing the same danger you're telling us will, will exist if we put in safety mechanisms for the kids that our, that our street maintenance people tell us, create pedestrian safety.
I would say you would create more because you would be insinuating to families and children with a crosswalk that it is safe. I would imagine it's being used today, just like how anyone crosses anywhere. But the minute you put a crosswalk there, you insinuate it is safe, and you would, I would have to believe, invite more traffic to cross there.
Have you been out there recently?
I'm out at these sites a lot, yes.
It, it'd be hard to figure out how to invite more people to cross that street. This morning, it looked as though literally every child in the school crossed it. And I'm, I'm being a little bit glib there, but it's, it's pretty incredible how many children cross that street every morning as it exists today. And, you know, it's okay. We planned this. Like, heck, I was here when we, you know, I don't know if we had to approve anything to do it, but we did it. It's okay to say a plan failed, and it's okay to look for better solutions in the future. And that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out here, is I see kids running around fire trucks. I see kids dodging U-turns. And we, we need to figure out something, and it's, it's been going on two years now. And it's, it's pretty tragic for the parents of kids who have to deal with that.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Kelly. Do we have anybody from the public? One minute, sir.
Mayor and Commissioners, I, I'll entertain which one you'd like to take first. I believe Mark Young staff person.
Okay, then we'll go to the gentleman in the chamber. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Court Harrington, and I live at 522 North Davis. And that five hundred block of Davis is between Eleventh and Ninth Avenue. I probably consider myself primarily a pedestrian, and I walk a lot. In fact, I walked to the meeting today. And I go down Ninth Avenue, cross Warren at Ninth, and then go down Lawrence. And I probably do that maybe twenty, twenty-five times a week. And I've, I've been sitting there. Sometimes it's sort of frustrating listening to this. There's a crosswalk on Ninth and Warren. It's unmarked. And I'm, I'm, I, I get just, as a pedestrian, I just get beside myself when I say, "Well, there's no crosswalk", when they mean there's no marked crosswalk. And when I hear Miss Kind say, "It's safer to have an unmarked crosswalk than it is to have a marked crosswalk", which just seems to defy logic. And the only thing is, I think maybe she believes that by taking the markings away, you've eliminated that crosswalk. And as a pedestrian, I use that crosswalk all the time. I'm also the grandparent of a student at Central. And I walk my grandchild to school some days, particularly last year and maybe the year before. But, and I typically pick her up. And because I was concerned, I'm probably one of those people that emailed Commissioner Holliday about, "Can't we do something about this"? And I participated in the audit, the walk audit performed by the Non-Motorized Transportation Advisory Committee. And then after that meeting, oh, and I was, you know, part of my motivation for going to that walk audit is I was actually hoping that someone from the school district would be there, but they weren't. And I've reached out to Principal Stillson, and I've also made calls to Kelly Kind, and I've never gotten any kind of satisfaction. And, and that's a, I've, I've got issues with them with snow removal as well. But after that walk-around, I conducted my own pedestrian count. And this was back in November, and there was kids Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday and Friday. And my granddaughter actually was in a, a pod with digital learning, so she wasn't there, but I went down anyway. And so, twenty-eight percent of the students in the morning crossed at Eighth Avenue. And seventy-two percent of the students who came in the morning crossed at Ninth Avenue. So, it was three to one. And in the afternoon, it was twenty-three percent crossed at Eighth Avenue, and seventy-seven percent crossed at, at Ninth Avenue. And, and then in anticipation of this meeting, I went there this morning. And eighty-five students crossed, or pedestrians crossed Ninth Avenue, forty-five crossed at Eighth Avenue. And, and so, so it's, it's a little, it's not quite as much. But there were some circumstances this morning that maybe would explain... But there were some circumstances this morning that maybe would explain why fewer people crossed at Ninth Avenue. One was, there was a big fire truck parked in front, and I saw actually people, when I was doing the count, come in and walk up to Eighth and cross. And also, I think the city is doing something on Rodney, and you couldn't cross Rodney at Ninth Avenue either. But there's a lot of parking there by the cathedral, and there's not much parking on Eighth Avenue. And so people who even drive their kids to school will park in that little turnaround at the cathedral or along Ninth Avenue, and then walk their children to Central, and they all cross at Ninth Avenue. And it sort of only makes sense. And, you know, I heard that, you know, there's entrances on, there's an entrance up some stairs on Lawrence, and there's one on Cruz. But if you think where children live, nobody comes from Last Chance Gulch to go to school. I mean, they're up in the Hawthorne School District. They come from north and west of Central School, and so that they get funneled into Ninth Avenue.
Sir, you want to wrap up now?
What's that?
You want to wrap up?
Wrap up? Okay. So I'm one of your constituents. The school district is not a constituent. And they get to have their say over a constituent, and I find that offensive. And it's my safety, my granddaughter's safety, the safety of the Central School students. And wrapping it up would be great. And I would urge you to adopt the alternative two and three, as Greg Worth mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Collins and Commissioners, my name is Chelsea Seegrist. I live on 611 Ninth Avenue, and I am the Student Council President for the parents at Central School. I do want to submit to you a petition that we had a number of parents, over 60 parents, sign asking that there be a bulb out and a crosswalk reinstated at Ninth Avenue. Currently, the students are asked to enter the school property. Actually, I'm going to back up just one second, and thank you for working with the school district to build the school in the first place and to rebuild that school in that neighborhood. We definitely, as parents, appreciate having our school back in our neighborhood. So the students are asked to enter the school property in the morning through the playground. The playground, as you know, is located on the north side of Ninth and Warren. This is not patrolled currently in the mornings by any crossing guard. As you heard, and I have seen a response from Ms. Kind, as I have tried to interact with her as well, that there is a crossing guard on Eighth Avenue. You'll see from the picture I submitted this morning, there is no crossing guard in the morning at Eighth Avenue. They do have crossing guards in the afternoons, one technically with a stop sign at Eighth Avenue. There is a, maybe unofficial, crossing guard at, an employee of the school district, though, at Ninth Avenue. So as the school district is pointing out, this is a place of traffic. This is a place of concern. We are putting somebody at Ninth Avenue in the afternoons. The families and children have to walk partway into the street currently to see around cars that are parked on Warren in order to cross the street. I've witnessed that myself. A third grader who consistently walks his kindergarten sister to school looks around the cars and then pulls her back in order to make sure that there's nobody coming. I'm curious to know the distance from the back of the last bus in their designated parking area to the north side, or, sorry, north side of Ninth Avenue. That's where the parents are asking that the new crosswalk be placed, or crossing lines be placed there. We'd prefer both places. But the north side, near the corner of the cathedral, I don't think that that is directly behind the buses. There's quite a distance there. I don't know if it's been measured before, but the bus, it's not that children are crossing directly behind buses. They are actually, I would guess, from the distance of that north side, in front, by the cathedral, is of equal distance to the front of the, where the buses pull out. So I'm not sure that that's going to be of a concern, because the majority of the traffic and the 300 students who come to that school, the parents are often bringing students to the north end where the playground is. We have submitted pictures. I've submitted other pictures to the commission in regards to this. We hope that you'll take into consideration the petition with the names and signatures of multiple parents who might not be here tonight, but, you know, assuming that we are representing them today.
Thank you. Would you forward the petition over to the clerk, please?
Thank you.
Do we have any others? Please.
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Kelly McLean, and I live at 711 North Rodney Street. So I'm sort of northeast of Central School, and I am a central parent. And so my kiddos prefer crossing at this unmarked crosswalk. So just a few of the things I wanted to cover. So this is the main entrance to the playground for the school, and all of the students have been directed almost the entire time Central's been opened to enter in that entrance. It's also the main access to the playground for the community after school hours. That's the easiest way to get into that. And most of the classrooms sort of exit out onto that section of the playground. So it's the natural exit to the building as well for most of the students. It's also where the majority of the parking for parents, when they're picking up and dropping off, is. They tend to park either in the cathedral parking lot or right south of the cathedral there, and drop their kids off, and then run back to their car. So it's obviously the most convenient corner to cross at, but I think the more important thing is that it's the corner everyone is crossing at anyways. So even if it wasn't the most convenient, it's where everyone is, and it's where the danger is. I really wanted to address the safety concerns that have come up. As for it being an emergency lane for the fire department, I suppose you want to keep it less congested in case they need to access it, but obviously, it's congested. It doesn't matter if that's the fire lane. That's where people are crossing. So that's, it's already congested. Adding that crosswalk is not going to make more people. And then the school bus thing, I know a couple of people have mentioned this. Because of the snow removal, we have a light pole right next, it's to the south of where the people cross. They cross north of this light pole. And I used to be a school bus driver who had to enter the Central School Bus Zone. And so that light pole actually prevents that 14-foot tail swing, that blind spot on the school buses sometimes. We can't hit the kids when they cross the crosswalk because that light pole is ahead of them. So that light pole, I know some people want to remove it for snow removal reasons, but the school buses for tail swing sweeping, it's actually made the kids much safer at that crosswalk. So it is actually impossible with that pole there for a school bus to tail swing sweep any of the children crossing that crosswalk. So I really think it's no more danger to the kids crossing there than crossing at Eighth from the school buses, because the school buses will just be facing them head-on. Because, this is getting a little technical, but you can't pull in until much later into the Central School Zone, so your tail avoids that light pole. So it's actually a pretty safe place to cross, school bus-wise. And so I really wanted to address that. We're really excited about that stop sign and teeing it out on Lawrence, because we're hoping that will slow folks down, because it's just a yield right now, so they can whip around. And yeah, as a school bus driver, I would never come up Lawrence. That is steep, and the winters here are rough. I think that covers the main things I wanted to mention. We, I've talked to a lot of parents, and we cross there, even if the crosswalk isn't there. And we feel safer if there was a marked crosswalk, and drivers would have to notice it and abide by it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Megan Harrington.
Go ahead, Megan. You have the floor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Megan Harrington. I live at 522 North Davis, and I'm a parent of a third grader at Central and a member of the parent council. And I just wanted to kind of reiterate some of the points that have been made as a parent. So I heard from the school district a lot about intention and the intention of the design, and I just wanted to emphasize that there is a difference between intention and then functional use. And because of how the playground entrances were designed, that children enter at that entrance on Ninth and Warren, that functionally, that is just where the parents and the kids go for pickup and drop-off. And without a marked crosswalk, cars are less inclined to slow down and stop. And I think marked crosswalk signal to cars that there are potentially pedestrians walking. And it's not necessarily going to invite any more people than already use that crosswalk. And so there, I also heard that there's been talk of different ways of entering the playground. And in the two years that Central's been open, that has just been the natural entrance. And it was my understanding that it was difficult for children to enter through the front door because of staffing. When children enter the school, the teachers are not looking out for the kids. They're doing their prep. And so it would be the responsibility of paras to watch kids. But kids are also on the playground, and so paras need to be on the playground. And as I understand it, you know, staffing can be difficult in the district. So options of entering through the front door didn't work when the school first opened, and I don't foresee that as a parent and sort of understanding how staffing works in the district, that that would be a workable solution. And so it seems that for the foreseeable future, that entrance to the school in the mornings and the exit in the afternoons will be at Ninth and Warren. And since that is where the entrance and exit will be, that is where parents and children will also be. And to increase safety, we should put a marked crosswalk there. And so I urge you to choose the plans that include that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Amy Barrett.
You have the floor, Amy.
Let's see, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you for listening. I own Lasso the Moon, the toy store downtown, so obviously I care very much about the children and the whole community. But I'm going to speak just as an adult right now who walks to work and walks down Ninth. I live on Davis and Ninth, the corner of Davis and Ninth. So I walk down Ninth, and I am one of those that crosses without a crosswalk and takes, and heads down Lawrence, and have to step over the curb and the grass and all that. But that's my preferred route down to my toy store. And, you know, I would love, I'm hoping that reconfiguring, the teeing of Lawrence and Warren will help with that traffic flow. But as people have said, you know, people are coming around that Y there and going uphill and having to speed up. So it is a really awful intersection for pedestrians. But I, too, would really think that a marked crosswalk there at Ninth and Warren would really benefit, and also the crosswalk at the new Lawrence and Warren intersection as well, for those who are coming from the north side of town and, or the north side of Warren, to be able to cross safely. So thank you very much.
Commissioners, Mayor, I do have some written comment. I'll read into the record at this time. My name is Jaren Borrego, and I live at 416 North Beatty Street, and I commute by bicycle through the Ninth and Warren intersection. I travel through this intersection four times per day, 8:00 AM, 12:00 PM, 1:00 PM, and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. I weave in and out of parents and children dropping off through the entire Warren and Ninth intersection daily. This is a heavily-used intersection for pedestrian traffic, regardless if the crosswalk is there or not. The crosswalk would greatly improve safety for those that already cross there despite the removed crosswalk. The removal of the crosswalk has not dissuaded children and parents from using this intersection. I also travel from my home through this intersection as a pedestrian with my dogs at least five times per week. The intersection is used by more than just the students and parents, and all pedestrians could benefit from a crosswalk. I strongly support the crosswalk at this intersection to increase pedestrian safety and connect. And then it ends.
Thank you. Do we have any others? No. Okay, you, please continue.
Mayor, if I could, just to clarify the additive alternates that have, may have gotten a little bit lost. So the first one is just to install the crosswalk across the north crossing of Warren and Ninth. The second alternative would install both the north and the south. The south one does put a, puts the ramp basically in the same driveway as the emergency access driveway. That's, you know, that is an allowable design. I think it's one that we, you know, may want to consider that that could be some conflicts there, being right in the, basically, the curb cut. And then the third one is just the irrigation to water the grass that's intended to be out in that additional section.
The third one is what?
An irrigation, in addition to irrigate the expanded landscape if any of the additive alternates were chosen. The other one that I would like to, if we move forward with any of these, we would like to consider making it a one-way, southbound movement along Warren there. Yes, we know that that would cause some inconvenience, but it would allow for a little bit more room for the parents to pick up, drop off. And again, the passenger doors open to the school, and, you know, try to enhance that drop-off feature along that route. Plus, the oncoming traffic that was spoke about would be eliminated. It would only be the southbound movement. And I'd be happy to answer any more questions.
Thank you, Director Knopf.
Go ahead.
Mayor, I have a question about the design. So, you know, I know when we were going through this process of thinking about safe routes to school for Jefferson and the Montana and Highland intersection, you know, you all and the contractor, you know, brought forward, I think, some pretty creative ideas as far as what, how to potentially route people across Montana. And I was skeptical. I think, you know, there were some questions around sort of designing it so it was that kids were kind of going kitty-corner across. And my sense is it's worked quite well. I don't know how you all have felt about it, but it seems like that design ultimately has really worked. And kids and individuals are crossing in the marked crosswalk. So one question I had, because I, as I was looking at the different alternatives and thinking about some of the concerns of the school district around the south side of north and that particular crosswalk, you know, thinking about the alternative that just provides it on the one side. But then, we, you know, we all got this video, and it's quite clear that a fair amount of children are crossing. And the ones that I'm particularly concerned about are the children that are not with parents. They're crossing on their own on the south side of Ninth. So a question that I had for you was, and I seem to recall maybe a discussion about this in one of the work groups a year or so. I attended one of those, where there was some discussion about creating a marked crosswalk that was slightly diagonal, so that you sort of address maybe the concerns about the school buses in that area, and just sort of veer that crossrock from the south side of Ninth, but sort of veer it a little north. Was that discussed as a potential option? Or are there concerns with that type of design on this street?
Mayor and Commissioners, I do not know if that exact option was contemplated, but human nature, you're crossing from the south. But human nature, you're crossing from the south, you're not going to go north to go south to stay in the marked crosswalk. People are going to just A to B, that's that's their typical. So, you know, making a diagonal from the south side over to the north, you know, we, you know, that could be a possibility to be marked. Um we could look at the the distances and see how how it works geometrically. But typically, the reason why we don't like skewed crosswalks, and I and yes, the Highland one is working well, is the more perpendicular a crosswalk to these the road, it's the it's the narrowest width for that crosswalk. So anytime you start to introduce angle, you introduce the length of time that it's going to take to cross that crossing. So that's why we try to make them as perpendicular as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Any other questions for Director Knopki?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple.
Please go ahead.
In similar vein, um so I'm wondering if we were to adopt the number two and number three alternates um or alternatives, what can we do to help address some of the safety concerns that have been brought up in terms of the buses? Um because I I mean, I don't, I really don't want kids trying to look around, you know, the back of a bus, which I understand is probably happening right now anyway. But what can we do to mitigate those risks? And then um I guess can you, and you started talking about this a little bit, but what happens to the fire lane if we were to adopt number two?
Uh Mayor and Commissioners, the fire lane stays. There's a a design concept in the in the best practices that allows designers have realized that sometimes there's a driveway right where a crosswalk needs to be. So they allow that to be on the edge of the driveway. So the emergency travel or the emergency access doesn't change. It just gets a truncated dome on the south side of it. Um as far as what the commission can do to, you know, mitigate some of the safety concerns, um the biggest one is to consider making Warren that one way. You know, i- if you talk to parents and you talk and and people, they're right, it's a congested area. You know, the school was put back in its historical location, which is great, I think, for the city and the and the historical nature. Um unfortunately, when the school was originally built and that land around there platted, you know, the straight, the streets were considerably narrower than um what we would, you know, like to see now to accommodate all the pedestrian and bicycle and boulevards and everything that we have now. So by making that a one way or at least allowing staff to consider looking at that option, we would be able to, you know, address a couple of the concerns um by the school district. You know, the congestion, if everybody going both ways is dropping kids off, then that would just mean everybody's going to be going one way with that with that option. You know, we would have to take a little bit more time to look at that and see if that's feasible um to expect that. Um the parents would do that, but I think it would mitigate some of the the snow concerns, the bermine of the snows um by the parent drop off by the buses um and then just the narrow nature of the of the roadway itself.
Thank you, Director. Um my question to you, um I know doing it one way will take a lot of time. So but this problem is immediate. So can we, can we do both?
Uh Mayor and Commissioners, yes. I mean, all, we're not asking you to table this to let us consider the one way.
Right, okay.
We're asking you to um in conjunction with this, if we move forward with the bulb outs or even if we don't, to allow us to look at that one way option at that location to try to minimize congestion.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh question for the manager. Uh at what point, let's hypothetically say we approved alternatives two and three, at what point would you see us taking up that possibility of uh the directional change?
Uh Mayor and Commissioners.
Yeah.
We we could look at that immediately. We could start with the outreach to the to the neighborhood. You know, school's winding down, obviously, but that doesn't stop us from reaching out to the 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 community around there. And, you know, it could go into um, you know, the beginning of next school season. Ultimately, the best scenario would be to implement it prior to the school start so that it wasn't something that came up in the middle of the school year. So, you know, if we could get it done this summer, great. We could, you know, institute it, get the notices out to the parents and everything. If we needed extra time so we um get more public comment from the school, then, you know, that's something that we could do over the next year and then implement over the next summer.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I I was just going to comment. I mean, I think if we if we think we have a fair amount of public feedback on just a marked crosswalk, um I I would be reticent to move quickly on a directional change of a of of the street. Um I think we've got, I mean, we can certainly make a decision today. I think I I don't, I think it behooves the staff to spend some time to sort of study it and get a sense of what the potential impact is. But I also wouldn't want any action we take today to be a sort of a a consensus on on moving forward with that because I think that that's a pretty significant change. And as Ms. Kind pointed out, I mean, this is a street that is forty feet above it, the street, you know, um Cruz Avenue. So I mean, it's a it's a thoroughfare in an in an area that I I have no idea, right, how um a a one way would would operate. And so that would be my, just comment on that, that's a pretty significant um change that would, I would imagine, would we'd want a fair amount of public input.
Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, go ahead, Manager.
Thank you. It was just, uh, thank you, Commissioner O'Loughlin. I was going to ask David, how long does that, it was great to you. How long does that kind of study um and analysis take? And and how did you arrive at that that one way? Just to try and get some context around how much you work you've put into it so far? And then how long it would take for you to come back with that?
Uh Mayor and Commissioners, it was always an option. I think we suggested it during the original planning stages during Central. I can't remember if it was an option that was put out to the public for comment. But we have the school list of the of the students that we could, you know, funnel any public meetings through the school district to notify any parents over the the summer break and have those um those meetings. You know, the reason that we we originally was the congested nature of that. And we know that mixing the parent and the and the bus drop off and then having um that promenade across Eighth just introduces a lot because the the pedestrians get the right of way. You know, if there's if there's schoolchildren waiting on the one side to cross, the crossing guard's going to stop traffic. Well, that just backs up that traffic and causes, you know, more congestion. So, you know, I think we could ta, we could get a a pretty good grasp, have a couple of public meetings over the summer and maybe, you know, a month before or so, be maybe a month and a half before school starts, we could come back and say, we need more time, um we need to proceed, you know, with it. And then we could study the two-way traffic through there with the with the intersection and then come with a recommendation, you know, either in the middle of the semester or and then have an implementation plan for next summer. Um one thing to note, um with the Central School Building, Seventh Avenue between Warren and Cruz is a one way now. And it's a one way um westbound. So if we chose to do the one way southbound, you would have a circular motion taking people down to Cruz so they wouldn't conflict with um current um one ways or that traffic flow.
Mayor, if I may ask a follow-up question. Uh Director, when you say it was always on the table, would you say that that it was discussed as much as the bulb outs were? Or is it just an item that had not been and has not received enough attention? Just trying to understand whether or not it has received as much attention. Is there all other elements or if you're actually saying that we must go back? Just to get your recom, just your professional opinion.
Uh Mayor and Commissioners, I think that it probably didn't receive as much as the bulb outs. It was something that staff brought forward um in meetings with the school district. And um so I I believe professionally and for the good of, you know, everyone up there too, that we would need time to look at it um to make the correct decision.
Thank you, Mad- Manager and Director Knopki. So um.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just really briefly, um I think, well, you summarized it correctly, that there's clearly an issue right now that needs to be addressed. Um and I would just ask of staff, as you start going through this process as well, if, you know, this passes, that um if if there are other solutions um in addition to a one way or otherwise, that you consider those and and make sure that we're covering all of our bases um in terms of, you know, what our options are to make things more safe.
So for the bid award that led us on this journey.
Mayor, I'm happy to make a motion if that's.
For the bid award, but we still need a decision on the other one. So yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion and we can see.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mayor and Commissioners, I don't want to interrupt. There was um some written public comment. I'll read into the record if that's okay.
Please, go ahead.
Stuart Seagrest. "The school district and Ms. Kind ignores reality. Families and pedestrians are crossing at Ninth. The city must face this reality and make the crossing safer by putting in a marked crosswalk to address this current liability. If there is a concern about exactly how to address, the city should put in white lines while it determines whether or not to put in bulb outs." This is from Stuart Seagrest, six eleven Ninth Avenue.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to award the base bid and additive alternatives two and three for the Lawrence and Warren intersection reconstruction project, city project number nineteen dash zero eight to Helena Sand and Gravel in the amount of two hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, how do we address this one? The um um we call it crosswalk. I'm going to, are we addressing that? Okay, good. B, Sixth Ward Sidewalk Repair Service Award. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This project on the Sixth Ward intersection corners, they were inspected and evaluated for ADA compliance during the inspection. It was noted that there are numerous trip hazards and this project is a further movement towards our compliance with ADA. I'll turn it over to Director Knopki for any further uh details that might be important in this award.
You have the floor, Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Commissioners. So we had brought this um forward to you some time ago um with the TIF award. As the city manager noted, we noted a lot of slip, trip, and fall hazards um when we evaluated the area for a future mill and overlay project. The city went to the Railroad Ti- um TIF Board and the Railroad TIF Board um awarded the city a hundred thousand dollars, which street maintenance matched for a total of two hundred thousand dollars. This is the consideration of the award to White Resources. And I guess to make it short and sweet, uh we moved to award the Sixth Ward Sidewalk Repair Services Contract, Project T S D thirty-six to White Resources Group, Inc. for the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the commission?
Just a brief question. Um for Mr. Knopki, what's the timeline on getting this completed this summer?
Um Mayor and Commissioners, once we give them notice award, we can sit down with them and see what their schedule is permitting right now. Um our hopes is to expand as much, if not all, of the money this summer. White Resources seemed excited to to work with the city. So we can come back or um uh an informational only to update the commission on that.
Thank you. Any other comments for Director Knopki? Do you have any public comments? Uh Ma- Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no written comment and I have no hands raised on this item.
Okay. I'll just see another motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to award the Sidewalk Repair Services Contract, Project T S D thirty-six to White Resources Group, Inc. for an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications proposals from the commi- Commissioners. We'll move along. Report of the city attorney?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have a long one tonight.
Oh, geez.
I'm just kidding, Mayor and Commissioners. Just a real quick uh brief update on the Beatty Street Trailhead case. That was the uh Nick Sovner and Sherry Thornton sued to stop the Beatty Street Trailhead project. Uh you may recall that uh the district court denied their request for a an injunction to stop that project. The project was completed, but the case has still been lingering. But the the plaintiffs voluntarily dismissed with prejudice last week, so the case is formally done.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Attorney Jordan. And that's all for litigation strategy also.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Report of the city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Good evening.
Good evening.
Wanted to just uh say how much I've enjoyed going to the farmer's market. I'm not sure how many of you have been able to get out and enjoy. This last weekend was a really great event. And I know there are a lot of events that are that are opening up in our community and uh also excited to attend the rodeo that is coming at the end of July, which I've not had the pleasure of attending this year. So just wanted to give a a bit of kudos to those coordinating the farmer's market. It was really, really terrific. The item on the agenda that I have for you all is the official submittal of the city manager's budget this evening. And I know that um while I think there's a PowerPoint quickly that's coming up in front of you, the um clerk of the commission, Ms. Claiborne, shared to you copies of a handout. And I'll also share out to you an email. It is a summary of the changes within the budget over last year um by way of line item additions, specifically the F T E and then capital outlay items that are within the budget and their alignment within your strategic outcomes. The intention was to make more clear the efforts of the team to try and align the work that they're doing with the expectations you all have and how they see some of that work. It will seem confusing at some point when you'll say, huh, how does this vehicle replacement within this group actually align with our intention of improved neighborhoods? Those kinds of questions I'm happy to help answer as we go through the next several weeks of the the budget, preliminary budget adoption. But my hope was to respond to the question, which um I had received last week about how do these requests actually align? And I wanted to at least give you somewhere to start with as you start really scrutinizing the next pieces of of the budget, which means your actual adoption of the preliminary budget with any amendments that you might uh bring forward. Next slide, please. Unless I have control. Nope, okay. Just as a reminder, these are the strategic and key activities, strategic outcomes and key activities that were adopted earlier this year and the effort of our team to implement wildly important goals. Those are goals that the um directors and their leadership team and staff all work towards identifying longer term movement and then implementing key activities each year in support of your your strategic outcomes. So our hope is that there's alignment. I look forward to hearing back from you and we'll have another conversation with you on just that work plan itself. Next slide, please. Within the budget, you'll find this is the first year where Within the budget, you'll find, this is the first year where we're really pushing into the adoption of some policies that are needed within the city of Helena, in particular reserves. When we set reserve, um, policies, the importance really lies in what the risk exposure is within the fund itself, the volatility of the revenue sources and expenditures, and then the dependency on subsidies that that particular fund has had. I know that the, um, the finance team and under the direction of the, um, Finance Director, Danielson, have spent a great deal of time thinking over the types of, um, expectations to implement those policies. You'll see those as part of this adoption process within the budget. Next slide, please. Uh, you'll also note that I am submitting to you a balanced budget. That budget is balanced based on Montana code annotated and as summarized here. The expectation is that your projected beginning cash balance plus estimated revenue does not exceed total expenditures and that is exactly what we have submitted to you and I'm submitting to you. In the beginning, we had had a draft preliminary example of what the general fund looked like. Just wanted to share what that looks like again here. Next slide. There's been conversations, we've had six working sessions between, and really what, um, has been a, a process that is, uh, the draft review of the iterations the team has gone through and answering questions you might have about the particular submittals by each of the departments before today. One of the larger conversations has been around the use of structural balance within the general fund in particular. And structural balance is further defined as, uh, total projected revenues equalling or exceeding total projected expenditures plus spending excess funding balance on one time non-routine expenditures is actually discouraged. So, you'll see the balancing that I've suggested, um, and am submitting as part of this budget is, meets the balanced budget. Uh, the structural balance, I don't believe we're, uh, in a fiscal stability location to actually adopt. Next slide. Part of the conversation around structural balance is also the conversation around, uh, the policies, um, and cost of living adjustment. This year is the first, um, where our, our new, um, Human Resources Director McMahon, Renee McMahon, she has put together, um, in consultation with our finance team, a method of how to calculate cost of living based on three metrics and then suggested. So, you'll see, um, the Bureau of Business and Economic Research, the Quarterly Census of Employment and Wages, and then the Montana Regional, um, Labor and Statistics, um, housing based data is also compared. Those three data sets are, are listed here. The two-point-two, um, is very conservative when you're looking at the cost of homes going up ten-point-two-five percent just in twenty nineteen, uh, twenty nineteen to twenty. Obviously, data sets are, are lagging. Clearly, the market has changed. The same with, um, quarterly living wage increases and that six-point-three percent average increase last year. So, overall, the two-point-two is in relationship to the, the team. In the big picture, uh, Director McMahon will be looking over all of our staffing plan as well as the classification system. We have some serious compression issues that we're dealing with within classifications where people are within, um, grades that are vastly, within positions that are vastly different and in the same grades. And so, what results is compression over time because the type of activities are so very different. So, a part of the adjustments that you see within positions that are currently filled are related to those compression analysis that have been done so far, but more work will be done in the coming years. It will take years to adjust this system to clarify what reduce and reduce our, um, our compression issues. I had shared earlier, when, um, Commissioner Halliday had shared a question around the R O I for the streets assessment, that I would be providing to you the Commissioner discretion balance and want to note, um, just a couple of things. Within the general fund, you'll see we have, um, set from the far left to right, um, general fund, each of the funds are, are made available on the left. And then in the ending balance, FY twenty-one, that is our projection. We also see, uh, excess reserves. So, we'd taken our reserve policies, identified what that ending balance would look like, and then adopted the projected total revenue, then set another policy reserve and, uh, excuse me, and, and looked at the excess total, which results in how you actually can calculate new spending over either one-time or reoccurring. At the end, that excess reserves available is, is the, the last balancing point. Lots of conversation was around how much, um, general fund savings was left. This year, we had, as you know, reimbursements through the CARES Act. Those reimbursements resulted in savings in the general fund, which we'll be talking about in our next meeting together, of around one-point-four million. I pulled that out and then you see you have about seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars, sixty-seven thousand dollars within the general fund to distribute as you choose for one-time, uh, particular activities. Same down if you look at streets, uh, the streets assessment, um, Civic Center. That negative balance is in relationship to the expectation that we will be sharing over a, uh, revenue reserve, um, excuse me, sharing over funds to the general fund. Those dollars are calculated within the main. They are not necessary, it's not necessary during the one, that balance at one-time availability that we hit the general fund for them. So, that negative balance is, is based in knowledge that it will be already covered within total spending. If you have any questions on that, I, um, I'll, um, open you up to, I'll open up to questions at the end. Ms. Claiborne, next slide. Next step, so the, uh, today, tomorrow, today's the seventh, so tomorrow, if you would please submit to me any of your asks for one-time, that one-point-four million left to be spent, and I will put it into the, uh, budget calculator. That budget calculator will be sent back out to you all and individually you will respond with your priorities within the spending. And then on June tenth, by five P M., you go ahead and complete your submittals on the fourteenth, and then at the sixteenth, we'll discuss what your consensus is in moving towards those, that spending. That could include adopting, um, carryover usage into the FY twenty-two budget. So, it's important that you have both of those in mind as you're working towards any amendments that you would like to make to, uh, the, to my budget submittal. Uh, we'll also make sure that on, uh, June twenty-third, we'll try and share what we can see may be, um, effects of the modifications of those, uh, FY twenty-two budget amendments. And then the twenty-eighth is the actual public hearing. During that public hearing, we'll ask for motions on edits and, uh, starting July one, you'll be using a preliminary budget. This year, it's, uh, we, and I have shared during the working session, the importance of adopting a final budget, which includes any excess revenue that has not been incorporated as well as the, uh, final levy setting from the county and the, and the state. So, those, that final adoption, actually, uh, we look forward to seeing what our total revenue is as we believe that structural balance will not only be included by capturing those revenues as we should be doing every year, but also evaluating what we're going to be spending the next several months doing, which is charging back administrative charges to funds that aren't, we have not had time to, to complete appropriately. Next slide. So, just a, a quick summary, uh, this is one of our most transparent budgets here in Helena. We have BEHerd, we have been using BEHerd before, um, getting to this place. Every time there's a, a revision or an update to the budget, the BEHerd site is updated with the, the step in the process. Uh, we're also, uh, we had the six pre-manager working sessions and then we've been using the Balancing Act cali- calculator for the general fund savings and we'll also be filling it with this budget so that anyone who is interested in learning how or what our actual revenues look like within a calculator and a simplified conversation can view that and we'll get that live this week. Uh, we are not recommending any rate increases or, and assessment increases, uh, reason being the same since we had the conversation back in January, I believe, uh, around the book of fees and that we really need a really, uh, good set of time to analyze our rates and assessments and what actually triggers increases. Uh, this is a balanced budget and it begins the implementation of fiscal stability measures nec- necessary really to achieve fiscal stability in the next five years. As I've shared, fiscal stability is not just whether or not you have money, it's also the staff that's, uh, made available on a consistent basis, policies that you adopt and then operations and procedures in place. So, those three areas are the areas that are most in need at the city and this begins implementation of efforts to, to implement fiscal stability. That's a quick show, a quick, quick PowerPoint presentation. We have had so many conversations around the budget. There's been, um, on our submittal, the only difference between the last drafted preliminary budget and this preliminary budget I had shared via, uh, an email that itemized those, um, benefits and personnel account adjustments as, as well as narrative changes. So, narrative changes, um, will likely continue. We're still capturing, um, edits as we're going through, so we'll, we'll continue to revise those until we get to that, that last date. But mostly, it's aligning what dollars change, uh, to, to the narrative sections and trying to really mirror within the line items what is in the narrative. With that, I'll, um, ask if you have any questions. Me.
Thank you, Manager. Howl Shawk. Questions from the Commission?
Mayor, I have maybe one question. Thank you for the presentation, City Manager. Um, and I, I know that, uh, Danae stopped sharing screen, but I, I did have one question about the table, um, about sort of what was remaining. Um, and on the right, it had sort of a highlighted, um, row for, just for each of the funds. So, for the general fund, I, I see the reference to the one-point-nine-million-dollar transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund reflected in the capital improvement, which I, I believe is actually, that's not the transfer, that's the expenditure, I guess, of, of those dollars. Is the, I'm wondering if the general fund line reflects all of the proposed transfers from the general fund to other funds?
Yes, it does cover all the transfers.
So, those would be included in, is it in the budgeted? Where, where would that, where would that transfer show up on that, in the general fund line?
We have not put the total spending on this chart. Total, uh, transfers, excuse me, on this chart.
Okay. Okay. So, am I, I'm just, I'm wondering, and maybe I just need to spend some time with this new table, um, so maybe if, if it's possible to get this, that, that would be helpful. But just trying to kind of get a sense of what total one-time and total recurring encompasses, um, again, at some point down the line, that might be helpful. Cause I'm not sure, I, I understand the concept of this, I'm not sure if I'm, if I'm like going line by line, if I'm tracking it all, so. Okay. And then I actually, Mayor, I had one other question that, um, actually relates to another item a little later down in our, in our agenda related to amending the FY twenty-one budget. So, this reflects, um, some additional expenditures, um, both for golf and then for hea- for health insurance primarily. My understanding from communications, I think from the city manager, was that that amount would, this is, uh, a plan to use seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand of the remaining one-point-four million in COVID for these, no, and Director Danielson is shaking her head. Okay.
Correct.
I'll have to go back and read that email. I, I guess I was under the impression that we had one-point-four million remaining and we have these additional expenditures that you were proposing to use, um, that, those, those COVID funds for.
Thank you, Commissioner. No, I confused the issue. I submitted that, uh, suggestion as an opportunity. The reason this item is coming tonight is to increase the spending authority within the budget. The total revenue received by the city to date is sufficient enough to cover this. My suggestion was around not needing to do it because we already had spending authority within the one-point-four million. So, there is no need to change this item up because we have the revenue, we're just asking for the spending authority. So, if you think of the ten-million-dollar ending balance that we projected, it's within that ten-million dollars ending balance.
Okay, thank you. And I'll save my questions for that lineup, for that, this, that agenda item maybe for later, but I just wanted, just in relation to the one-point-four million, wasn't sure how it connected, but, okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, a question. Could you pull that, that slide back up? Thanks. The, and this, it's helpful to see that chart, so thanks for putting that together. Um, the, my questions for the four-forty of the general capital fund. My understanding, in the yellow line, it says Commission discretion balance, one-time available, and in the four-forty general capital list, it's about one-point-one-eight, um, million available there. And I noticed we have a total recurring. There's a whole backstory to that one that I'll try to avoid going into tonight, but the, that one-point-one-eight-two, when I look at our preliminary budget, that is the total remaining balance of the four-forty fund, am I right? And I'm seeing Director Danielson nodding at me.
Yes, you're correct. Correct, Commissioner Halliday. Yes, the, uh, you'll also notice that the reserve policy doesn't exist yet for the general capital. We'll be starting that conversation next year. The general capital outlay, um, overall capital in its method has not been adopted in a repeatable way, so we don't have a reserve policy yet because we haven't clarified how that, um, different type of activity within general capital is actually being projected. But yes, that's available.
Yeah, no, I mean, I appreciate that. I guess my, my question with it, um, it's probably, maybe it's gonna take me a while to get there, is, so, when we used to get the budget, um, you know, whether it was under, uh, Manager Alis or, um, Manager Taylor sort of saw through one, um, but predominantly Manager Alis, there was a section of the budget called the C C I P. Now, I'm not saying the C C I P was the pinnacle of accuracy and my favorite document to try to, to work through, but if nothing else, it provided a extremely dry recitation of everything, right? From police cruisers down to hand dryers at the Civic Center, um, pay-as-you-go with a ten-year lookout pretty much. And it, it let us look at any given year as a snapshot and say, we have a schedule that two-million dollars is gonna need to be spent on specific capital in twenty-twenty-five. Now, are we gonna squeeze another year out of that open lands truck? Heck, yeah, if we need to. And so, some years we did not need to budget that additional fifty-thousand-dollar capital expenditure, and so it was always kind of, we, we fudged around the edges sometimes. Sometimes we had to outlay more because something came up like Kendrick Legion Field, brand-new thing that was never on the capital schedule. You know, flash forward, um, the year that, uh, Manager Cortez put together her budget and. You know, flash forward, the year that Manager Cortez put together her budget, Mr. Cooy provided to us a more truncated version of that because Manager Cortez agreed that the CCIP was sort of unwieldy and not her favorite thing either, and you're continuing that tradition. But we always, what we always had unifying all of those was some sort of lookout into the future for the capital fund, even if it was one or two years that said, hey, next year, we're going to need three new police cars, and the year after that, we're going to need a new truck for this and we're going to have to build that. When I see a number like 1.182 on the general capital, to me, that money is sitting in that fund because we know we have capital obligations in fiscal '23, and we know we have fiscal, we have obligations in fiscal '24. Now, can I tell you with my crystal ball exactly which one it is? No. But I know that a truck is going to come due, I know we're going to have to buy a new hand dryer, I know we're going to have to, you know, change out someone's desk, and they're going to be there. And I want to be clear, my understanding that we cannot run that fund to zero, as fun as that might be with capital projects, am I right?
Commissioner Halliday, the question you're asking, is that the reserve, basically, is that the reserve amount we should be setting?
Well, no, not a reserve amount so much as the, it says here, commission discretion, 1.182. Well, that's enough to buy a Henderson Street Bridge, right? So my take on the 440 fund was always that I could open up the CCIP and say, yeah, I can't buy a Henderson Street Bridge as a commissioner's wish list project because next year there's 1.182 million in expected capital expenditures. So do we have anything, understanding that I know we want to change the CCIP, that says we at least have these planned expenditures in fiscal '23 or fiscal '24, fiscal '25? Can't say that any one of them's going to expressly happen on one year, but to know how much of that 1.182 is sort of already spoken for over the next three years?
Great question. I do not have an answer for that. What I have been looking at with Commissioner, or with Director Danielson, promoting her all over the place twice tonight, sorry about that. So with Director Danielson is to look at the vehicles. The vehicles are the largest charges that we would have. Please come on, Commissioner, Director Danielson.
We'll just promote you right now, so.
Sorry about that.
Here's your right hand.
I swear. But the anticipation is that those larger one-time are the vehicles and those vehicles are the tandem trucks and the fire trucks. So we're already under a loan that we're working on with the Intercap. We also haven't changed the assessments or the, any, anything related to what could backfill that capital outlay as well. But as I understand it, this was the best we could do for, for the time being, but I'll turn that over to Director Danielson.
And maybe just for Ms. Danielson, have you looked at the sort of FY, probably '18 would have been the last one, that had the last CCIP? It still would have been just a smidgen into '21, '22, '23 for, and see what exists on there that we ought to be looking for next year about this 1.18 that's sitting there?
Yes, I have, I have reviewed it. Our budget analyst, Christopher Cooy, also sat down with all of the department heads and walked through their capital over the next few years that is currently held on that list. I have questions about the integrity of that document. So it, although it does exist, it was a tool for finance to walk through all of the equipment and vehicle needs and some maintenance and repair items that are not only needed in the next fiscal year, fiscal year, but over the next 10 years are on that list. So you're right, the 1.1 million that's left in that fund, should you choose to delegate that to capital funding that has not been already outlined in the budget, that would deplete the cash reserves in that fund and there would be nothing left for equipment in the future, unless there was some other funding mechanism, although in fiscal '22, the general fund is transferring almost $2 million to that particular fund in order to pay for ongoing repair and maintenance, vehicle replacements, things that are normally not specifically on a capital schedule, but more ongoing maintenance and operation costs.
I mean, I guess, I guess, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to just ask the question of, do we have any way of knowing how much of that 1.18 is being asked, asked for, right, by the respective departments as it's allocated in there over the next three years? Is it, is that 1.18 sufficient, insufficient? I mean, it's never, in my experience, it's never been sufficient, right? We've always been playing a losing game in the 440 fund. That's why traditionally we've always appropriated somewhere between $350,000 and $500,000 as a sort of recurring general fund transfer every year. That was always a losing proposition because on any given year, the 440 fund, at least on paper, demanded 750 to 2 million in scheduled replacements. Granted, not, they weren't always actually executed on. So I agree with you that we don't want a CCIP that doesn't actually tell us those kind of things, but it was a good way of us knowing that there were things on the horizon and we could look forward and see them, and that's just why I'm trying to gauge here. We're spending a lot of money, we put a lot into it this year and we're spending a lot of it, and I just, I can't get a clear picture of whether 1.18 is safe, unsafe, very unsafe. And I'm going to go with unsafe and very unsafe because rarely has the 440 ever been safe. I've been telling you the whole time I appear, so I mean, Commissioner Logan wrote us a long op-ed about how unhealthy we were being with the 440 fund back when he was running. And I'm just saying, as a commissioner today, I can't gauge the health of the 440 fund. And it would be great if we start hearing some of those things from you guys, even if it's just telling us what's wrong with it or what those expected expenditures are because it scares me to hear that it's not healthy and that, you know, we don't, we don't have a plan necessarily right now to sort of keep it healthy. And the only way to do that is general fund transfers, for the most part, at least on the general fund items.
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I think that the way that particular fund has operated is not something that, in my experience, is a fiscally sound way of managing ongoing fleet and equipment costs. They're can, they're, they're being managed like a capital fund. In my experience, that we've operated equipment rental and replacement type funds where each particular vehicle is listed out or equipment is listed out and the lifespan of the vehicle is, is outlined, and then there's a funding mechanism to charge users of those particular vehicles each year so that when the time comes to replace the vehicle, that's replaced. It comes on a schedule. And I think that that's what this particular fund is trying to do. However, the way that it's been funded has led to the current situation where we have so much deferred maintenance and deferred requests for, for, you know, things like field replacement, court replacement, resurfacing. Funding it at $300,000 a year has led to the situation where we're at now, where now you have an overabundance of items that have been deferred over the years for requests for fiscal '22. Part of that resiliency work that we're doing is to identify funding mechanisms and procedures and policies in place in order to solve the ongoing maintenance and operation and replacement of vehicles and equipment and whether it comes. I don't believe the mechanism that we're using now is that solve. I am looking at analyzing with our, our finance team to propose a new method. Now, that's not going to solve the cash balance in one year. It won't. I can, I can clearly tell you right now that that fund does not have enough money in it to fund the ongoing replacement of vehicles over the next five to 10 years. What I'm wanting to do is work with finance team and the City Manager is to come up with a methodology so that we can get to a fiscally stable way of funding our, our equipment replacements. The capital program, I agree, it's normal to present a long-term capital plan in a budget document. We just don't have that for this fiscal year because there's no real mechanism to do that at this point. But it's also been my experience to propose a long-term capital project plan that goes five to 10 years and also identifies funding sources so that the Commission can have that at their, at their disposal to look at and analyze for future needs.
If I may as well, sorry, I just wanted to add one more item around. Some of the larger picture conversation we've been, when having, also includes debt and the relationship of debt within the general fund. Our debt went out, we really dropped down our debt this last year as well within the general capital outlay. So we've been really strong in trying to think creatively, so it's not just around replacement, but also the type of debt we're taking on. Vehicles themselves are not, should have their own replacement schedule that includes not only wear and tear of the vehicle, but also its age and then its use. Cold storage, I know, is, is one of the hottest conversations that has come up. Those storage, of, storage of vehicles that are extremely expensive, large tandem trucks are $250,000, those are really hard to replace if you don't budget for them and kind of set them aside in the envelope for the tandem truck. By doing that over time, you're actually more stable than the one-time purchase. So that's what I would like to see, is more of a dedicated look at how much on an annual basis we need to be sitting aside to be proactive against these replacements, so vehicles on their own. Larger pieces of equipment like the 911 systems or any of the integrated electronic or technical IT systems, those, those are really much more difficult to budget for in capital as compared to infrastructure improvements or these, these vehicles. So to get to the point, we feel pretty strongly that we are addressing the deferred maintenance in the capital outlay that's really happened over the last three years because it hasn't been addressed. So if you were going to choose your adventure and try and set aside a particular volume or a particular amount, if you wanted to be concerned with debt buydown, we don't have, we really bought it down. We're in such a really, we're in a really good place to be conservative. So you could set a percentage as a group and decide, yeah, we want to go ahead and spend half of this and leave half. Those are all things that we will be having longer-term conversations around. Right now, I'm not seeing as, as many large out, outside asks, but we also haven't, the only biggest deferred items are, you know, water and sewer, and those are in a totally different structure. So just to put that out there, we've been overthinking deferred maintenance more than one-time purchase because one-time purchase has been really very effective this year in buying down that debt as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, I'll just say, Mr. Mayor, that, that number worries me. I don't know that there's anything we can do today. That'll be something for y'all in the future. Good luck. But it's a, it's a concerning number, just in again, if you just follow the Commission's past, I'll say broken practice of $450,000 a year, right? That doesn't, that doesn't get you back to solvent in that fund in the long term based on the schedule that we have in place. I mean, heck, we've got the rebuild of the transfer station is in the fund, I think it's priced out at like 45 to 70 million dollars or something in the, in the long term. Never going to get there, even if you saved $450,000 a year. Don't know that you're actually going to replace the whole transfer station, but it's, it's something the Commission has to be cognizant of, that this fund is a, this fund's a problem and it, it should have a recurring dollar amount attached to it, probably should be higher. And if you don't think about it as a recurring fund and you don't think about it as year-over-year new money, then you're not going to look at your budget in the right format because you're going to think of it as one-time money, and as a result, you're not going to be thinking about it as a recurring dollar amount. It should be shifted into that column of year-over-year dollars to just try to tread water. And so if we don't do that starting today and next year, you're going to keep slipping behind even worse, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any public comments? Do you have any raised hands?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have received no written public comment and I have no raised hands at this time.
We're taking a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will move to accept the City Manager's budget submittal as the primary or preliminary budget beginning the process of public hearing, which will take place on June 28, 2021.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Adam Clerk.
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner L. Lachlan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council, do we have a representative on?
We do, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Nancy Perry.
You have the floor, Ms. Perry.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor, give me just a moment. Go ahead, Nancy.
Thank you very much. Okay, I had a great long description of our report that I was going to talk to you about, but it's 25 minutes after eight and you guys must be exhausted, so I'm going to make this very speedy for you. For starters, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving HCC this opportunity to talk about our review and recommendations of the budget. I hope you all received a copy of your report and have had time to read it over, and I was going to do a quick summary, but I think I won't do that quick summary. I'll just tell you that it was written in three sections, and section one is just a summary of the report, and it also describes HCC's responsibility for reviewing and commenting on the budget. And section two was a list of 10 topics that the HCC hoped the city was keeping in mind when they were writing the new budget. Section three was a discussion of 20 different funds that we selected to include in our report, and those funds were grouped in that we, I looked at them afterwards and I thought, well, there are really four logical groups of funds in this. The first one is, is different funds that in our report, we're recommending that the city continue to do exactly what you're already doing. So we thought this, this is excellent. An example of that were the loan programs, there were four of them, where you're loaning funds to residents for water surface lines and sewer surface lines and sidewalk replacement, and finally the solar panel installation. And we thought that those loan funds were an excellent idea and those brought on a great deal of discussion at our HCC meetings. So that was the first group. There's only one fund in the second group, and that was the one where we're asking for a small budget increase for HCC in order to give our administrator a COLA increase and also an increase in what we're budgeting, budgeted for neighborhood outreach to the residents of our districts. And the third group, we were asking the city to take your time, or asking the Commission to take your time, making one decision that you've been asked to make so that you can make absolutely sure that you really understand the situation before you commit yourself. And the one I'm specifically referring to do is what, what to do about handing control of the civic center over to a nonprofit entity. And this brought on a great deal of discussion at HCC meetings, so I thought I, I needed to bring that up. And the final group is we are asking the city to find additional funds needed to pay for essential infrastructure programs and essential services and utilities that the city is going to need to provide in anticipation of future population growth, and we had a long discussion about that. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Much appreciated. Any public comments? Adam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no written public comment and I have no hands raised.
Thank you. Thank you. Regular items. A, consider a resolution expanding the boundaries of the street maintenance and improvement district for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Manager Hollis Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Our budget coordinator, Christopher Cooley, has stepped forward. Should you have any direct questions for him? But this is an additional process that we go through in ensuring that we are adopting for the next fiscal year the appropriate boundaries for the assessments that will be aligned within the city of Helena. So the first item A is street maintenance and improvements and that's District One and it expands the boundaries based on the current analysis of properties. And you'll see that is the same for item B. And, excuse me, item, I think that is the last of it, isn't it? Item A and B. Thank you.
Comments or questions from, Mr. Cooley?
Mayor, I have maybe one question. I don't know if it's for the city attorney or city manager, but given that we tabled setting the hearing for the street maintenance, would it make sense to also hold off on doing the boundary or is it, does it not, does it not matter the order?
Mayor, Mayor Collins, Commissioner O'Loughlin, you know, it doesn't really matter. I think it probably makes sense to pair them up together either way. We're going to be, in fact, this would give the city another month or two in case any properties were annexed to be included in those boundaries and not skipped over until next year.
Thank you, Attorney General Jordan. Any comments or questions? Okay. Any public comments? Entertaining a motion?
Well, Mayor, I will, I'm sorry, I lost the page on me here. I'll move to table the resolution expanding the boundaries of the street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two and place it on a future agenda item following the public hearing on June twenty-eighth.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution expanding the boundaries of open space maintenance district one for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Manager Hollis Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, the same applies to this. This is an additional resolution expanding the boundaries. We did go ahead and adopt on consent the open space fee for the next fiscal year and this open space maintenance district is just to set the newest revision to the boundaries.
Thank you. Entertaining a motion? Oh, is there any public comment?
I have no hands raised and no written public comment, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I approve a resolution expanding the boundaries of the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins. The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution of intention to amend the revised final budget authority and appropriation for fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one for the city of Helena, Helena, Montana by amendment resolution number two zero six zero nine to increase appropriations by seven sixty, seven hundred and sixty thousand and set a public hearing date for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Madam, your Hollis Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. This is the line item that, our agenda item that Commissioner O'Loughlin was discussing earlier around the spending authority and this request to increase our spending authority. Again, we have the revenues that we have received sufficiently available to us to increase the budget lines by this amount. This is just to increase the appropriation within the initial budget adoption so that the staff may receive the spending authority.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, maybe just a quick question, if that's okay?
Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
So to the city manager, so how, how does this then play out with the preliminary budget that we are working off of for June twenty-eighth?
Thank you, Commissioner O'Loughlin. The, yes, it would impact that by seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars, but the intention though would not be that it's the reduction. I would love to ask though, Commissioner, if I could bring Director Danielson forward to help answer that question.
You have the floor, Director Danielson.
Thank you, Manager Hollis Shaw and Commissioner O'Loughlin. These changes have already been incorporated into the projected column for the fiscal twenty-two budget, so no further impact to the funds would, would be necessary.
Okay, great, thank you. And then one other question, Mayor, while Director Danielson is up here. So when we had a conversation about golf, there, you know, I, I had a question about the, the transfer, the general fund transfer that is reflected in FY twenty-one in this current fiscal year. I think it was two hundred thousand. I, I think we were told that that hasn't happened and that that would come to the commission for approval. Is that still the case for, for the FY twenty-one transfer?
Yes, actually, I might defer to City Attorney Joden on that, but our thoughts were that with the approval of the fiscal twenty-two budget with that transfer in the projected column, that would also signify your approval of that transfer. But let me defer to.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner O'Loughlin, I concur.
Thank you.
So maybe just a follow-up question. So are we then, I mean, I don't recall having a circumstance where we have, where we're amending the current fiscal year that we're in as a commission, right? So, but that, I mean, that if, if there was ultimately further conversation about the, about where kind of golf sits generally, we would have, we would have that conversation and could amend that. So it's a proposed transfer, it's just be, it's just in the previous fiscal year?
That is correct.
Yeah, and this is, if I may, also this is the loan payment. So part of it is that we don't have the accounting established for that loan debt.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think it's more than that loan debt, but yeah, okay.
Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments?
I have no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? Would move to approve a resolution of intention to amend the revised final budgets, budget authorities and appropriations for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and twenty and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one for the city of Helena, Montana by amending resolution number twenty, two zero six zero nine to increase appropriations by seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars and set a public hearing for June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution authorizing participation in the Board of Investments of the state of Montana annual adjustable rate tender option municipal finance consolidation act bond, intercap revolving program, approving the form and terms of the loan agreement and authorizing the execution of the delivery of documents related there. Madam, manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner. This is the intercap loan that had been budgeted for this year, its final execution. And I know that both the fire department and Director Danielson are very excited to get this moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve resolution author, a resolution authorizing participation in the Board of Investments of the state of Montana, annual adjustable rate tender option municipal finance consolidation act bonds, intercap revolving program, approving the form and terms of the loan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
E, consider a resolution vacating the full width of the alley adjacent to lot eleven, twelve and thirteen in block thirty-six of the flower garden in addition to the city of Helena, Montana. Manager Hollis Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. The city's engineering team was contacted by Chris Rice, who was surveying on behalf of his client, the owner of Big Sky Auto Glass. The issue is that two existing sewer mains under his property were not recorded in an easement. The application is requesting a vacation of that adjacent undeveloped alley on the north side of the subject property in exchange for a utility easement to the city. So the legal description of the property is listed in the present situation and the Director Leland, long day. Director Leland is here if you have any further questions.
Any questions for Director Leland from the commission? Any public comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve the resolution vacating the full width of the alley adjacent to lots eleven, twelve, thirteen in block thirty-six of the flower garden in addition to the city of Helena, Montana.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider city project number eighteen through fifteen, Westside Water and Sewer Project Phase Two Additive Alternative Change Order. Manager Hollis Shaw?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This item relates to the Westside Water and Sewer Phase, Sewer Project and it's in a Phase Two additive. In particular, we're asking for authority to add in the total amount necessary to complete this addition. The alternative is being added as a result of conversations with a school district who have not allowed, given us permission to go under their new parking lot and as a result, we have to install a large lift station. That lift station will be across from the school. We are in continued conversations with the school district to receive approval to move forward. The unfortunate item is that they have asked if we, they would give us permission to do so if we would agree to let them expand onto their football field. We are not in agreement with that idea because it is a storm sewer and potential increased watershed, or excuse me, water table and are concerned with that location for such a structure. So at this point, we just want to make sure to at least offer the funds set aside should we have to install a lift station in order to keep from impacting the school district's parking lot.
Thank you. Comments from the commission? Any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Move to approve city project number eighteen dash fifteen, Westside Water and Sewer Project Phase Two Change Order Number Seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Loughlin.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, the last two items on the agenda tonight, oops, sorry.
You want to take over, I'll give it to you. Okay, G, consider a resolution suspending the prohibition of consumption of alcoholic beverages and possession of open container of intoxicating beverage on city property. Okay. Discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor? I think, can, can we have the city manager?
Oh, yeah.
We're feeling tired, I know.
I apologize, Madam, Manager Hollis Shaw. Go ahead, Manager Hollis Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I, these next two items, item G and H do relate to a conversation that was held in the most recent administrative meeting and directed to bring back a method that would allow for the waiving of consumption and in particular at the pride events. And one of the expectations that is within most city managers is that I bring before you the larger policy issue when in fact it may be a narrow slice. So we have had four different areas of concern around consumption and open containers within the city. So this particular item is directed at being clear on what, what is the policy decision overall that the commission has with regard to open container? And is it only for specific events? Is it only in specific areas of downtown? And I ask these questions of you because we have, we're coming out of this transition from COVID restrictions to a larger conversation and living with COVID and we've had conversations with the walking mall wanting to continue the open container and having outdoor consumption as well. We've had a number of other events turn in their permits and, and insurance. This, this came up as a relationship to the permit process that's currently in code. In order for an event to receive an open container permit, if they're going to, within their event, they have to have insurance. There are several events that have already completed that. This one in particular has not, it's understood that in the past, this has been waived of the event. I'm not sure how that had happened. I'm, I actually believe the, what had happened ultimately was the previous event received insurance coverage by one of the bars that allowed them to consume outside so they didn't have to purchase the event coverage. The event this year is three times the size and it covers multiple blocks and it's more difficult for those businesses to make that insurance coverage happen. Now, the events can purchase insurance. In this event in particular that was brought up, we would have to waive it just for that event and instead of waiving insurance, which we technically don't have authority to do unless I were just to say, don't enforce consumption on that day, we would result, what would happen is that we would not be issuing the ongoing open consumption and permits, that open consumption that happens in our parks as well. So the intention here is to be more clear. What is, what is it that is the policy issue that the commission is, is sharing to the team that needs to be moving forward, moved in, within the code? We have oftentimes looking back over the open container citations, seeing that there are actually people who are homeless and those who cannot actually pay for those tickets. So is it really about the consumption outside or is it about leveling out what is currently a system that really doesn't ultimately result in DUI? It doesn't remove, having open containment doesn't stop someone from drinking too much and it certainly doesn't stop them from being in public drunk. But there are two other laws that cover that in there, DUI and public drunkenness. The same for concerns around entering locations they should not have consumption. Each location has, each business has particular licensing assigned to them. This really is an intention to, to understand where is it that you want us to go? Is it just this one event? Does it apply to all nine other events that have turned in the permit and the insurance? Does this really, is this really a conversation around that we need to be working more towards citywide and, and setting best practice and looking at other communities? So the question is, is it one day? Is it just in downtown? Is it in downtown in the sixth ward? Is it, is it just this one event? And if it's just this one event, what do I do with the other nine that have completed? So.
Thank you, Manager Hollis Shaw. The last time we, we had this issue, what, I just want to, I'll make sure everything's clear. What was decided that day?
The last time, thank you, Mayor. The, this event in particular received insurance coverage from the.
No, no, I mean, the last time we discussed this as a commission.
What was the direction of staff?
From the commission to the staff.
It was, thank you, Mayor. The, the consensus was for the team to come back with a resolution that would allow for events. Now, what we learned is that we don't have that latitude to do only events. We have to look at it in the big picture, but you can certainly narrowly wedge it. wedge it if you just make that motion tonight.
Unless there's a change from the Commission, I think we should move forward. Go ahead, Manager.
Yeah. It's a long night. Mayor, maybe just a question for the city attorney. Just if I'm looking at option, and my understanding is we have two sort of options in front of us. If we were to look at option two related to the downtown urban renewal district, I'm wondering if it's possible to revise this language. So on page two, the highlighted sentence at the end, where it says November eighteenth, twenty nineteen respectively, add then for events taking place on July sixteenth and July seventeen, twenty twenty-one, and then strike section three of that. I'm wondering if that would sort of get perhaps to what I think maybe the Commission discussed at the last administrative meeting, but wanted to get your take on that potential language.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager Harlowshock?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll also defer to the city attorney on the specific legal points asked here, but it does broaden it to the entire city.
You have the flu.
So that's the urban renewal district one. I'm not striking that language.
So Mayor Collins, Commissioner O'Loughlin, my understanding is, we would put it on option two, which is the downtown urban renewal district, a specific date of June sixteenth and seventeenth?
July.
July sixteenth and seventeenth. It is possible. I will, I guess, express my concerns with only permitting a specific event. I think, one, as Manager Harlowshock alluded to, and we probably may have an equal protection issue in that those individuals who are consuming intoxicating beverage, alcoholic beverages, or possessing them in downtown or near downtown, I should say, not within the urban renewal district, but right outside, would be subject to the ordinance, and I think there's a question there of equal protection. And then, secondly, my concern is, is that we would essentially be giving a permit for this one event without compliance with the city code requirement that they provide liability insurance. That's just my concerns that, and that's kind of why we drafted option one and two that are broadly nonspecific to a specific event. We were trying to fit it more as a legislative action, which is immune from action for damages, rather than this potentially being construed as a permission to one event.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm curious about, and I don't know how the rest of the Commission feels about this, but I have no problem expanding this to, you know, these events in general, not just this one specific event.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm uncomfortable with either of these options for a couple of reasons. One, the suspension of ordinance. And secondly, the short notice that we're considering this action, I'm also uncomfortable with. I think, I think there's a pretty decent chance that we're bringing something that affects the public and the public safety and the public's safety forward without them really largely being aware of it. I mean, we received this, these proposals on Thursday afternoon, and so for those two reasons, the suspension of the code, I mean, there's any number of parts of the code that I would really be, well, all of it, just sort of deciding on very short notice to go ahead and suspend those. So I'm uncomfortable with either option for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Go ahead, Commissioner.
The city attorney. So there's a lot of jurisdictions in this country that have some form of open-air drinking district. Right? People think of, obviously, New Orleans has areas of, you know, here in Montana, Butte's got, I think they scaled it back, two AM to six AM, you gotta put that beer away. There's all sorts of towns across the country that have actually gone towards this concept. And I'm curious, because we keep throwing around sort of this concept of liability on the part of the city, for something that the city is just saying, if you choose to walk out of this bar with a plastic cup, we're not going to charge you with something. Nobody has to buy liability insurance for that, because the city has just said, drink them if you got them there. So what is, give to me in the nutshell, the liability concern here, other than more drunk people might wind up being up to more mischief? But like, what is that actual liability concern?
If I may, Commissioner Halliday, and then I'll turn it over to Attorney Joden. The first, I have an obligation to bring to you concern when there is just one and there's nine others. So that's the first. And then, so as far as liability, we don't have the plastic cup expectation. So the layers of good policy setting within those other jurisdictions have already happened. So I'm absolutely interested in working with you all to put together good policy for the entire city around and similar to those larger jurisdictions. And I'm concerned with doing them in one-offs that result in not really solving the bigger issue. So that's why I bring them in this way, and I can turn it over to Attorney Joden to address that second question around risk.
Yeah, because I'm not concerned. I mean, the liability question on the other nine, I mean, what a crisis of opportunity if we have nine events that actually want to make use of our downtown, celebrate downtown Helena, and be otherwise fun and boisterous down here. If you were here for Pride last time, most people's comment was, oh geez, why don't we have this every single weekend in Helena? So if the problem for us is the crisis of having nine more festivities that want to do that, like tally-ho, bring them on, let's have more fun, opportunity, and culture in downtown Helena. My concern is, my question is more about, really, Commissioner O'Loughlin's extremely narrow suggestion of, you know, this shrunken area for, you know, what's probably going to amount to about a ten-hour period of time over two days, ten hours a day, or something of the like. There has been this concept floated to of us of the fears of liability to the city, I assume, for someone tripping on a curb or something because they've just drank. And that's where I'm trying to get to, is you're never going to convince me that there's some sort of equal protection with regard to somebody sitting on the externals of that district. I understand you've got to tell us that, but you'll never get me there. But I want to know about the person who allegedly trips and says, oh, this is the fault of the city for allowing open containers. Because I don't see that one, but walk me to it.
Thank you. I'm going to step in first, sorry, just to come back to this point of the homeless whom have actually, we're issuing citations to on a routine basis because they have open container in public parks, and on this day, we're going to enjoy jovial events and still be able to cite people who are homeless because they are outside of that urban renewal district. So that's where we get to the equal protection conversation and individuals being cited for things that are really--
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that. I'm telling you, you're never going to convince me of that. Like, I appreciate it. I know you got to raise it. You got to voice that objection. But again, I really want to hear the city attorney's risk assessment, because that's the only piece left to me that would carry any weight. I don't see it, but I'd love to hear it.
Sure, Mayor. Commissioner Halliday. So I'll work backwards. I am not concerned with liability to the city if the city, as a legislative policy decision, decides to allow open containers on its property on streets. My concern is that, right now, the regime that we have set up is city code requires a permit from the city, essentially an exception to its prohibition. And therefore, by granting the permit to do so, the argument would be, if somebody is hurt, the city somewhat has liability and probably more importantly, defense costs. And so the code, which was adopted in 2019, essentially a longstanding prohibition and moved it. But we've had this prohibition in place for a long time. The risk being, if somebody does challenge the city, the city and MMIA would be on the hook for its own defense. And that's where we transfer the risk to the event holder, is they agree to indemnify the city, and they provide insurance to cover those indemnification obligations. So that's why, again, I go back to the, if we're permitting this, a specific event, when our code requires that they get a permit and they provide insurance, my concern is that we're giving them special treatment, we're not complying with our ordinance, and a clever defense attorney would argue that the city is somehow not only responsible for that, which I think, at the end of the day, we have a strong argument that, look, all we did was permit it, right? We didn't control the event. We didn't mandate that they provide excessive alcohol, or, I mean, if it's exclusively related to alcohol, probably at the end of the day, the city's not going to be found liable. So it's mostly the concerns about defending the costs of the claim.
So is there a distinction between event insurance and event insurance with alcohol? Because I didn't know that, like, are that plaintiff class, right, the person who got injured and says, you guys allowed this event? Well, if they have event insurance, they've got event insurance. Are they excluded if the person who trips happens to have drank a beer before they left their house that day, or was seen coming out of the Rialto with it, or is drinking one right then and there? Or does the event insurance just cover that anyway if no one's actually selling alcohol on the city right of ways, which is where, which is where most of this insurance requirement came from, was somebody who's acting as the vendor at like a city-designated closed-off area?
Right. So Mayor, Commissioner Halliday, we do not require insurance for special events. It's only the alcohol component permit that requires the insurance. Now, there are special events in the parks that we do have indemnification language and require them to provide insurance, much in the same way we require of alcohol. But it's, I wouldn't say it's a general matter, all special events. It's unique to parks, it's unique to the reservation of that park and the operations that they're running there.
So if we prohibited alcohol at, rightly, just never, we never did anything, we just leave this in place, people are downtown, everyone's behaving themselves, and no one's drunk, and no one's drinking anything, and someone slips and falls, we're not getting indemnification anyway, right, from the Pride group then?
That's correct. And that's because the city did not give permission for, just generally legislative policy, the city believes it's okay to consume alcohol on the street sidewalks and parks. But it's when we have a prohibition and we grant an exception to that, the concern is that somehow the city is on the hook for that. And again, at the end of the day, I don't believe, short of some showing that the city meddled in the approval and created or was contributory to the situation that caused the damage, we're probably not, the city's not going to be on the hook for the ultimate damages. It's the cost of the defense in defending the suit in the first place that we're trying to transfer risk to the event holder.
No, I mean, I get where you're coming from. You know, you're not going to convince me in terms of the balance of the values here. It kind of reminds me of the person who sued the Symphony Under the Stars because, you know, they were walking around Carroll College, probably had a drink and tripped and hurt their foot. So, I mean, I appreciate the answers. You know, it doesn't get me there. You know, it goes back to, I think, I think Commissioner O'Loughlin's right about the temporary limited piece, and then we can have that more robust discussion about what would be a best practices for the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
A question, I guess, so is there a recommendation from staff on these other nine events?
Thank you, Commissioner. They've already received the insurance, so they're already through the process. So they would not need the waiving. All of the other, all of the other events that require alcohol consumption insurance have completed it.
Mayor, I imagine that those events are a little, are different than this particular event, given that they're likely using one insurance vendor and are then able to get insurance. I mean, I think, or alcohol vendor, and able to get insurance through that vendor. That would be my--
What are some of those events?
Public races. Thank you, Mayor, your question. Races, other outdoor events in the park, those types of events. Now, as far as the insurance is concerned, we've, just because it's a larger event doesn't mean that they couldn't get the insurance. It's absolutely available to them. It's just a choice.
But the location is different, I think, compared to what we're talking about for this?
Well, most of them cover, the reason we require the open container is because of that transfer, as Attorney Joden has shared, to the city of that liability. So no matter the location, it's still required. No matter how big it is, it's still required.
And those are vending alcohol? Right? Otherwise, they wouldn't need the insurance, would they?
No, no. Whenever there's open consumption, they would need the insurance as part of the event.
Right, but all of these have a vendor. That's the reason they're doing it, right?
No, the vendor isn't extending the insurance. There are several events that have their own insurance for the event.
But the city attorney just said, they don't have to have insurance for the event if they're not doing alcohol. And the reason they're doing alcohol is because all of these events either have a multi-source or a sole source vendor who is selling alcohol at that event. That tends to be the difference here with what we're seeing. Right? If you just held an event at, you know, Pioneer Park, closed off the fences, and said, you know, you can open, drink, that's not what these events are doing. They're bringing in, you know, someone who parks a truck there and sells beer, right?
It depends. It really does depend. And the ultimate, it doesn't really matter the type of distribution. If there's open container in the event, they have to have the insurance.
And we can just suspend that, though? Yep.
Any other comments? Public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you for this opportunity to make comments. My comments are directed to the resolution portion of this, and I want to direct it toward the procedural, not the substantive of the policy. I believe that's going to be coming at a later time. For the record, my name is David Nielsen. I live at eleven seventy Mendocino Drive. As you know, I mean, you've been doing this for some time, commission action comes through one of three ways. One is a motion, oral motion, and then that is reflected in the minutes. Or if it's a written motion, then it's a resolution, and likewise, that is passed quite simply. And then the third way is the creation of an ordinance. And ordinances are much different and more important than a motion or resolution. And the reason is, is because an ordinance is establishing law. It's establishing law for the city of Helena. And after an ordinance is passed, through two readings, with at least a twelve-day separation period between the first and second reading, then it's posted and notice is given to the public. And that's because it's a law, and it's important. An ordinance, then, is codified in our code, and so we have the Helena City Code, and that's the source of our law. My concern was the notion of suspending a law through a resolution. With an ordinance, once an ordinance is passed, you have a code. If you're going to make changes in that code, you have to do it by ordinance form. You can't do it by one of the lesser methods. And the reason is, is because it is law. So if you want to repeal the law, you go through that same ordinance process. If you want to amend it, you go through that same ordinance process. And it's a lengthy process. I concede that. But that's what the statute of Montana requires, is that you have that longer process. I think that the danger is, if you try to suspend, which is in effect a partial repeal of an ordinance, through a simplified process, you run the risk of creating precedence that some commission-- some commission, at some point in time, will point to that as, that's the way you can do business. And we have a lot of, the city has a lot of important codes, provisions, that you don't want to take lightly. For an example, the fire code, that's by ordinance. You can't suspend the fire code by a resolution and say, "Well, we're not going to have a fire code." You have an annihilation or provision in the code. You don't want that to be subject to just a quick dismissal resolution. So I know that the policy decision will where, will be heard, it'll go through the process, I think that's the next item, is starting that first reading of that ordinance to whatever the policy is you want to do, but I really think it's dangerous, and I don't think it's legally sound to try to amend the, the code by suspending it through a resolution. So I would strongly recommend and encourage you not to do it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Do you have any other public comments? And a clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have Kev Ham.
Go ahead, Kev.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, thank you so much for staying so late on a beautiful night when I'm sure you'd rather be outside. Um, I appreciate what you're going through with this, and I know that it's very taxing and confusing to go over all of the details that are involved in this. There are a couple of things that I just wanted to make clear. I really, really, really appreciate everything that you're doing as we're booking everything in place for what's going on in Pride. It is looking like it is going to be much bigger than what we had two years ago, so it is continuing our growth and making a much bigger impact on the city, and we just want to make sure that we have in the place the things that we need to make this successful. I do want to talk to two specific things, one of which is, uh, City Manager Charlotte Hawk keeps saying that there is a way for us to get insurance for this event, for alcohol, and every single insurance company, including the ones that the city has directed me to, that I've talked to, when I explain to them that I am not the vendor, will not insure me, because they are saying that by the laws of Montana, the people that vend are liable. That means that Burton Ernie's, Rialto, everyone else that is vending into this downtown area, which is all of the businesses that pay taxes year-round, their insurance is required, their insurance is there to cover their liability for serving alcohol. They are still under every other part of their insurance agreements and every other part of state law that says that they cannot vend to people that have been over-served, are visibly drunk, et cetera, all of those things are in place. So, uh, the problem that I've had is that you, the information that you keep getting is contradictory to the facts that I am facing as I go out and talk to these people about what is going on. And I understand, and the other point that I want to talk to really quickly that I, is that the other events that I know of that are coming on, and I don't know all nine, but I do know that we have, like, Ales for Trails and Metalark Music Festival that are going on, and those use alcohol sales as a funding mechanism for their events and for their future goals. And in doing so, they become a sole vendor of alcohol at those events, therefore they take the liability of it. We at Big Sky Pride do not do that. We want to bring an event to downtown that allows all the downtown businesses that are here year-round to become the vendors multiple for it, so that they all make money in it. And I know that that's weird and different and odd, and I'm asking you guys to do a lot, and I really appreciate that you're taking all of your time on such a beautiful night to do it. So, I know we'll get there, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kev. Any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I've received no written public comment, and I have no other hands raised.
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Sorry to hear he's been having such a struggle with regard to the insurance. I had been assured by the team that MMIA, one of the insurance carriers, actually offers it to the events, they did not have, to have to have the vendor relationship in order to issue it. So, um, if I may, I would love to, I'll just give another call to MMIA myself and see what's up with this insurance, why they can't give it to the, to, to those events for, for coverage, it doesn't make sense, since I'm getting counterinfo as well.
Thank you. Kev, a question, have you contacted MMIA?
The information that I was given from David Knopke included MMIA sending me information for Payne West. I called the person at Payne West, they replied with, "We no longer do this insurance, I don't know why my name is still on that list." And they were the only person that I was given. When I reached out to other insurance agencies that I've worked with in the past on other events, they stated that because we are not an alcohol vendor, they cannot authorize insurance for alcohol, because we are not selling it.
Go ahead.
Thank you. We were just talking about if, in fact, we have to have a different conversation around the organizations that are offering the alcohol, because it covers multiple, it's, it covers multiple blocks, and it covers multiple restaurants and bars that could be selling. If it's something as simple as taking the sheet of all the potential vendors to the insurance company and saying, "Can't we get coverage for all of these vendors on these days for this insurance?", then instead of trying to get each of the vendors, which was the opposite he had to try and do, by having each of the vendors spend out their own insurance over and cover all of the areas, I can look into that as well.
Okay, so, um, man, I don't think I've ever been faced with this before. So if you're looking into that, what do we do?
Well, I, maybe I'll just make a comment. I mean, I, I think how this was brought to us is a little unfortunate. It is well beyond the conversation that we had. I thought there was some consensus amongst the commission that we wanted to, you know, support this particular event. It is a unique event in our community, given just the scope and breadth of it over that, that two-day period. So I'm, you know, I, I don't know if it would make sense, so then, you know, separately, I think we've been getting emails with concerns about a full-on repeal of this ordinance, which I, I don't think was the intent of this commission when we had this conversation at the administrative meeting. So my impression from that meeting was that there was a path forward in order to facilitate this event. I, I wonder if, you know, if we want to at least put forward a, a temporary suspension of, of the open container ordinance for purposes of those specific dates, to at least have it, so that the public understands that the intent of the commission was not a full repeal, but to temporarily suspend the ordinance. But I, I mean, I'd be interested in what others think, but I think this sort of hanging out there right now is, it seems, seems to go well beyond what we had talked about last administrative meeting. And, you know, Commissioner Dean, I also appreciate your comment, and I think I also thought that the intent of our conversation at the administrative meeting was to sort of figure out how we move forward with this event, and also think about a, a process for other events moving forward, because I, I also would support, you know, considering, considering this for other events, not just this event. And so having that process moving forward, I think, would be really helpful. We've got a short-term issue, I think, though, on the horizon.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, and I thought that too, and I saw, even though we had the agenda and all of that, but this is blindsiding, because we have already decided what we're going to be doing, and then to be discussing this, I am... I believe I was blindsided.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I'm wondering if we, and, and I don't know what City Manager or City Attorney think about this, but I'm wondering if we can have a Plan A and a Plan B, if they think that they can get clarity from MMIA and we can achieve event insurance, that be Plan A and Plan B? It'd be what, what Commissioner Loughlin has put forward, and then really starting to have an actual discussion about what is this policy long-term, and what do we want to achieve with it? I do, you know, I, I very much agree, similar with some of the public comment we got. I do think that, you know, this is something that is significant, but we do also want to facilitate, you know, events moving forward that, that do continue to bring more life and opportunity, you know, to different parts of the community. But I'm wondering if we, we can pursue a, a Plan A and see if we can get this resolved without changing anything within code, and then Plan B, we come back to, I get, what, what the Commissioner Loughlin had indicated.
Well, Mayor, what, what I might suggest then is that we, we, we take a motion, we amend what we have in front of us, and then potentially table it, but, but table it and to come up at a specific date, so that we don't lose this, and, 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 I mean, I know we're sort of working on a pretty short timeline. I mean, what, what the city staff put in front of us is a temporary suspension of this ordinance with, with no public hearing, you know, for, for the temporary suspension, right? There's a, there's a public hearing for the full repeal. So I think that if we were, if, if we wanted to just amend what we have in front of us and then set a date that it comes back to the commission, I would say June 21st, that gives a couple weeks for, you know, further conversations, but we've got it on the agenda, but we've got it on the agenda with, I think, what the commission was really driving for, right? Not a full, a full repeal. So I, I don't know what, what the commission's thoughts are on, on that, but at least we would then have in front of us something that's a little bit more narrow in scope.
So I think that makes total sense, and it, it ensures that we're going to turn over those rocks and see if we can get done, and if it can't in those two weeks, then we've got, we've got a decision to make on the extremely narrowed decision.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious if the City Manager or City Attorney has thoughts on this proposal?
Thank you, Commissioner. The most difficult part of bringing anything forward to all of you is the, the timing related to good policy setting, and this was just discussed. So for, for me, in, in particular, the, the item was brought forward in a pretty difficult way, in a way that I'm, I'm trying to flatten the conversation and make it more transparent as to what the big picture is. So if this was just the event, that's fine, but I didn't appreciate the method that was brought to me and the personal method it was attached to it. So my intention is to make sure that this isn't, this is a larger picture, that we're not just making a one-off event happen. So I just, as far as handling it in this way, that's fine. You, as the Commissioner, taking the risk on, and has been shared, that's, that's your prerogative, and certainly we will implement it from there.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, I'm certainly comfortable with following the code as it exists relative to events like this, and, and that's why we have the code. This is really, I, in my opinion, the first that we've really sort of noticed this up for kind of a public hearing. What happened, in my opinion, at the last administrative meeting, was an unnoticed public hearing. I mean, this, this subject came up in public comment, and we had a discussion that almost sort of bordered on a public hearing, but it certainly didn't show up, that subject certainly didn't show up as an agenda item that any member of the public would have looked at and said, "Oh, they're going to be discussing some sort of change to the, you know, public consumption of alcohol and open containers and that sort of thing." So, so with both of these motions that we're looking at in this particular agenda item, again, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable with the sort of process that we're trying to, trying to accomplish in, in a temporary suspension of something that's codified, and, and I guess that's where I'm at. I'm certainly comfortable with following the code as it exists relative to these events.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll, I'll just say with regard to Commissioner Dean's question, you know, we, we had a discussion at the last meeting, and no, it wasn't a public hearing, in fact, we're here talking tonight, right? We're having, we're having a public discussion on it, we've taken public comment, the suggestion is that we actually set it aside and have additional public comment on it. So the, the process objection always comes across when you subjectively disagree with it, but don't want to say it on substance, so we're done with that. Like, you oppose it and just say it. With regard to Commissioner Dean's question about, you know, does Commissioner Loughlin's proposal make sense, or what, what does the manager and, and City Attorney think of it? The way this is structured for us this evening was it was put on our agenda to do this tonight, which I think none of us are comfortable with. And what Commissioner Loughlin is suggesting is actually a two-step process for a much more narrow discussion. It's a, it's a better overall process than what we were told we could do tonight, that we had the authority to do tonight through public notice. So it, that, that, there's no, there's no reason why that's a worse process than what was put in front of us this evening as a decision-making point, because we were told this was an appropriate choice, although, looking down the table, none of the five of us seem to think that the two options that were put in front of us were remotely appropriate. So the question is, are we going to have the discussion to figure out how to solve this problem going forward? Are we going to calendar that up for a legitimate discussion? Or are we going to push it aside? And more likely than not, I mean, let's be honest, we're going to let it die on the vine if we can't come to agreements, this whole insurance thing that isn't going to work, and we're going to kill this thing. So I, I agree with Commissioner Loughlin's suggestion that we put it back out there, and we give ourselves a due date to get this thing decided, and then we'll have an uptown vote on it, and nobody can sit around and complain about public hearings, nobody can complain about whether or not it's, you know, done before the time. We're there, we're having it, it's on the agenda, everyone can talk about it at that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just have to take exception to Commissioner Halliday's remark that I subjectively oppose the event that this is surrounding. It's not that at all, it is process.
I didn't say the, the event, I'm talking about a suspension of alcohol, Commissioner.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Yes?
Mayor and Commissioners, at risk of convoluing this, I'm, I'm trying to distill this down, but it seems like, and I don't mean to speak for a majority of the commission, but it seems like the desire is ultimately to waive the insurance requirement, i.e. they still get a permit, and the city, you know, make sure that the closure of the streets is still good, and we, we run through the review of that, and as managers of the right of way, but it's really the insurance that is the rub with this particular event. I mean, for all we know, we don't even know if all the vendors want to participate, and that's the struggle with this event, is one licensed establishment does not want to be responsible for another licensed establishment, and what they do with theirs. So, for example, Burton Ernie's doesn't want to be responsible for the Rialto, and I think maybe that's where the difficulty lies. I mean, I, I still have obviously some hesitancy with that, but I've noted that with the commission, and, but ultimately, it seems that's where the commission may be leaning, is it's the insurance requirement that is the hang-up, not necessarily the underlying prohibition to begin with.
Yeah, and Mayor, I, I will just say, and I, maybe I'll go back and listen to the admin meeting, but I think we were told that it, it, in order to sort of get past that insurance issue, we needed to suspend... that insurance issue, we needed to suspend the, the ordinance. So if, if that's another solution, great. I think we were, I think that's what we were told at the admin meeting, was that the suspension of the ordinance was what would get us there. So, I mean, we could, we could still queue this up and table it, right? And then have the staff continue to work to, to find other, other mechanisms, if it's, if it's waiving insurance or, or what have you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion at this point.
So Mayor, I'll, I mean, if, if there isn't an objection, I can go ahead and attempt to move, to approve. Well, I guess what we really need to do is just move to amend this, and then move to table.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question? So back to the point that you just made, can this also include direction that if the staff find another solution that doesn't result in having to actually suspend the ordinance, that, that that can be brought to the commission and, and pursued?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, I can say I think we would all be comfortable if there's another route, that we just fully table it on June 21st, if, if we don't need to move forward with it.
Sure. So attempt to make a motion.
Okay, so I'm going to move to amend the resolution suspending the prohibition of consumption of alcohol beverages and possession of open container, of intoxicating beverages on city property within the downtown urban renewal district as follows. First, page two, the end of that sentence, following respectively, add comma, "for events taking place on July 16 and July 17, 2021," and strike section three.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk? Oh, any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Lachlan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
So Mayor, I will now, and I guess we're, we kind of jumped because... Oh, we just have, okay, we have two, two resolutions, but just as two options. Okay. So I'll, I'll move to table the resolution suspending the prohibition of consumption of alcoholic beverages and possession of open containers, of intoxicating beverages on city property within the downtown urban renewal district as amended, and to be placed on the commission agenda for June 21st.
Second. Is, any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
No.
Commissioner Lachlan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public who wishes to address the commission?
So Mayor, do we need to also move to table, or I suppose, here, the first passage on the, on item H as well?
Okay.
And then table?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I will move to table the ordinance repealing or amending chapter 14, consumption of alcoholic beverages on city property of Title VII, public ways and property, and chapter one, part one, possession of intoxicating beverages, Title V, police, police regulations of the Helena City Code.
Second. Any final discussion? It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Halliday?
Aye.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Lachlan?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, the commission will accept public comments on other topics. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have received no additional written comment, and I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll give them another 10 seconds. Are there any final comments from the commission? Why are you packing up like that? This meeting is formally adjourned. Damn.